...agency to the redevelopment agency meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Malpigh, any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes to the order of the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We didn't have a closed session tonight, so there's no report. We'll start with item number four, council communications and announcements. Mr. Grokot?
None.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Just would like to mention that we had a nice event on Saturday. My wife and I went over to Undisputed Boxing and met Mike Tyson. And I think it was a great event for San Carlos. There were a lot of people there. I thought it was great for Mr. Schwartz and for Undisputed Boxing. I thought it just brought a lot of attention to us, and I was very grateful to him. And actually, I was surprised to learn that I'm actually taller than Mike Tyson.
Thank you. Mr. Collins? Sorry, Mr. Grisilli?
Does that make me look younger or older? I'm not sure.
Whatever you like.
Whatever you like. Nothing good, I, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Olbert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind folks that I believe it's this weekend is the San Carlos PTAs and Ed Foundation Spring Fling, an annual auction extravaganza. So if anybody is interested in having a good time and bidding on some fun stuff, it's something to think about doing.
Okay. And the only things I have are on March 10th at 10:00 a.m. down at L'Oriola Park, we are going to, sorry, Laurel Street Park, I'm just off my game tonight.
You are.
Laurel Street Park, we are going to have the ribbon cutting for Balancing Act. It's the first piece of public art bought by the city of San Carlos. So that's Laurel Street Park, March 10th, 10:00 a.m., rain or shine, it says. And also, for those of you who are here, for those of you watching, if you go out into the foyer of City Hall, we have a model of downtown Laurel Street, the 600 to 800 blocks. It was put together by Mrs. Umber's second and third grade class at Britton Acres Elementary. It's a pretty cool little exhibit, so take a look at it when you guys walk out. And if you're watching on TV, come on down to take a look. We are going to get started. Okay, public comment. Item number five, I only have one speaker slip, but this is for persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. Mr. Carpié? Mr. Carpié?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I am the owner of the solar car carp that was stolen in 1905, excuse me. And I come here, try to have your attention and plead for the return of my solar car. As I said previously, the city, the police here, was the object of aiding and abetting in a theft of my solar car. When I came with a pink slip here showing that I was the owner, the police chose to give it to the thief for whatever reason I never knew. And you have the responsibility to get my solar car back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comment speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Does anyone wish to remove anything?
Just item E.
Item B?
E.
E, okay. Seeing that, can I have a motion for the rest?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve item six, A, B, C, D, F, and G.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? No. Mr. Grokot, item E.
I just wanted to ask, because we've talked about this before on the policy of reappointment to our commissions, I thought we'd had a discussion that we were going to have a policy of always opening those up. And I don't know, maybe I misunderstood that.
Mr. Grokot, that actually failed.
It failed?
What we had come to the discussion was if you had an issue with the council, with a commissioner, you brought that up yourself and would bring it for the rest of, that's why we have the six-year term now. We limited the terms, but we did not offer opening up.
Thanks for the reminder there. Okay. Well, I have, and I'm sorry to Cameron, I don't have any disagreement with his being approved.
So can we have a motion?
I just wanted to, yeah, ask that question. So, yeah, so I would move approval of reappointment of Cameron Johnson to the Economic Development Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item seven, which we have none. So item eight, unfinished business, eight A, San Carlos Library Interior Renovation Project, consideration of approving final conceptual design and project budget. Mrs. Boland?
Good evening, Mayor Klein, members of the council. My name is Christine Boland, Director of Community Relations and Governor of City Clerk. We're back again this evening with the final conceptual plans and final budget for the San Carlos renovation, library renovation project. In October, the council had a, held a study session to review two preliminary designs and draft budget, and from there, we went forward to design the final project. Comments received from council then was, different council at the time, inclusion of ADA disability access, ensure quiet areas in the plans, can't read my own writing, security was brought up, and possible expansion to the second floor, which the library stated they are not ready for at this time, and also inclusion into the plans, the city's climate action plan. This project is being funded by the Library Joint Powers Authority, of which we're a member. Also, the city, the Library Joint Powers Authority is funding it, the city, the Friends of the Library, and a bequest from the Hofer family. Brad Cox of Anderson Berlay Architects is here tonight once again to provide an overview of the project and review the final plans. Brad? While Brad's coming up, I'd just like to thank the core team who put in so much time and effort into this project over the past nine months. There were 12 of us, including Anne Marie De Spain, Chet, Milwaukee, J.C. Escalante, Rachel, Amanda, Tom, Karen, Janice, Guy Wallace with the city, and of course Brad, Reda, and Michelle from ABA. So thanks so much for your attention. Brad?
Thank you. Good evening. So I wanted to first overview, well, an agenda, but also the process that we all went through in working with your community on developing the plans for your library, and then get into the design, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Along with the design presentation, I do have an updated cost model to bring to you and discuss that in relationship to the project budget that is available. So, let's see, we'll do a project overview, a design overview, cost, and then we'll talk about next steps and when that construction period might occur. So in terms of the project overview, why improve the library? It was designed in the early 90s, built and occupied in the mid to late 90s, and has been really well-used and really well-loved by the community. It's, the operational plans for this county library system has evolved, and they're changing how they're delivering their services. And in order to be able to receive library services similar to the other cities nearby, the renovation will help that, as well as any maintenance items that have been ongoing, and also just a cosmetic update. In terms of a timing process, we began this quite a little while ago. We involved many community members in some kind of collaborative talking sessions. We started with words and narrative and discussion. We ended with some drawings and more discussion and feedback. We presented, as Christine mentioned, a few months ago to the council, and then are now back for the final. Before, now, when I say final, it's the final concept, and then the next steps would be to do documentation and actually bid it and have it built. So in terms of community input opportunities, there were two public meetings with about almost 60 people attending. There were some community surveys, one of them was electronic, and received some responses. The other one had some plans and questions posted in the library and some other locations, and people actually wrote on them and submitted cards as their input. And then again, the two council presentations. The goals and priorities of the project, and I'll just list them off, the goals being implementing the library service model in San Carlos, addressing the facility maintenance issues that we were made aware of, smooth and well-facilitated community public process, and then creative and collaborative design process for all participants. And then in terms of the priorities that came out of that process, we added, it was a priority initially, it just wasn't named sustainable design, the first list, service points through signage, we came to the community forum with those, and then in the community forums added green and sustainable design. In terms of possibilities, the key elements that we wanted to work into this library plan with your community was that it become welcoming, that it was, that it becomes more exciting and inspiring to the learners, intuitive, efficient, flexible, and customer-driven. And I'll explain that when we go through the plans. And now for the design overview, I'll first review just the existing plan. I'm sure you're familiar with the existing plan. I've got color coding in just the big, broad areas, but as you enter, I don't have a pointer, but you enter into the rotunda. Currently, your service point is off to the left in a nice, large desk area, a small marketplace or a place where newer materials or high-circulating materials are located. There's a large area of technology, adult fiction and nonfiction are kind of the two bays that go down the ends, and then children is immediately kind of a U-turn from the entrance, the whole children's space off to the right. The stars that are indicating, those are indicating self-checkout locations. Now, the new design layout, and first I'll go with the same color coding, and then we'll go without the color coding if you wanted to look closer. We made many improvements to the staff area, including the automated sorting machine. We brought the service point for children's and the rest of the library into one general location, which will really help with operations. We brought the self-check machines to be located immediately on the way out of your customers and patrons, so that it's quite convenient. We enlarged the marketplace, which is a very popular portion of the library. We also enlarged the children's area and are going to be providing a larger and kind of more comfortable place to have storytelling. We added, one of the key goals of this was to add seating, and we were able to add a large number of seating throughout the library. One thing I missed was the teen area. We are proposing to construct a three, it's not fully enclosed, but it's a somewhat enclosed space, it's labeled teen, it could be used by multiple age groups, but the upper edge of that is to be a glass partition. So it's a little bit more enclosed than the spaces now, and I think that'll help make it more functional. I'll just pause on the plan here. It's potentially difficult to see, but we can ask any questions. I will be showing some enlarged plan areas in the upcoming slides. So in terms of comparison, again, the primary, one of the primary goals in terms of layout was to add seats, and we definitely were able to do that. Technology is equal to what it exists now, and actually with the laptops that'll, cart storage, it'll actually go up in the future. And then in terms of shelving, the actual collection items is going up, the linear foot of shelving is going down, mostly because the size of things are getting smaller with electronic media and whatnot. So we're actually providing much more than what is there now. In terms of what these spaces will look and feel like, what we've got in the lower right corner, and sometimes it's in another place on other slides, is a portion of the plan. This area is called the marketplace. It's, the three photos are of other libraries. The plan is of the reconfigured San Carlos plan, and basically, the idea with this one is when you enter that rotunda, you are hit with kind of, much like these images around it, books, new materials, DVDs, whatever is circulating high, and it's kind of a bookstore feel, nice browsing atmosphere. In terms of technology and meeting rooms, another primary goal was to add multiple spaces where either in a room or outside of a room that you could gather, tutor, have a class, have a book club discussion. So in addition to locating technology into a better place for those types of activities, we've also added to the meeting rooms that are located throughout the library. In terms of the teen spot, now, I understand that the Teen Advisory Commission met and picked the name "The Spot," and I thought it was great because they actually recognized that it wasn't "The Teen Spot," it was actually a place to meet, and not just for them, but for others, so they chose the name "The Spot." But again, it has a little bit more enclosure than it exists now, some comfortable furnishings, and their collection will be housed in that area. The kids' place currently, right now, there's a room behind the children's area that's kind of enclosed, and right now, there's some materials back there. We're actually going into that space with the children's area, and that'll be a nice storytelling area and adding some space to the kids', to the kids' library. In terms of the patios, just recognizing that you guys have such a nice space outside of your library, and we're trying to, through design, encourage the use of the outdoor space, perhaps through some seating. And then sustainable design, first of all, reusing the facility and giving it new life is about as sustainable as you can get. So I think that's worth mentioning first. Having the facility work better for the staff, who are there 40 or more hours a week, is a very important thing. The material selections themselves, in terms of green and sustainability, the carpets, the paints, and other materials are being chosen for low off-gassing, for their durability, and for other green and sustainable measures. The lighting replacement that will be going on will help with the energy efficiency of the facility, so that'll be another green measure that's occurring. And then just in general, creating flexible spaces that can be used more often by different size groups is, in my mind, a sustainable measure, because you're not creating additional space, you're using the space that you have better. In terms of a cost overview now, just to pause for a moment on the difference between a cost model and a cost estimate, because we're in concept, we're modeling costs, and in future design efforts, we'll be able to estimate costs. So we've built up a budget that is reasonable and that can achieve the goals that we have laid out here. In terms of the budget for this project, or the cost model, in terms of hard costs, we have allocated $1.132 million. In terms of soft costs, I believe you all have a backup sheet to this that goes into a little bit more detail. Soft cost budget to $255,000. And then the project itself will also hold a project contingency. Now, I want to mention before I mention the contingency, in the construction numbers, there is escalation to an estimated construction time, and there's also some contingency in the upper numbers. So we're feeling very good about the project being accomplished for this budget. So the model is coming up to $1.421 million. The funds available because of what has already been dedicated, and then also a couple of additional sources that have come up, we're actually coming up to almost $10,000 more than what is estimated. And I want to mention that estimate is conservative because of the escalation and the multiple contingencies that we've added. So the good news is, the design work is, the conceptual design work is done, it's on budget, and I understand, or I believe that the funding is available. So at that, or here are the next steps. In terms of timing, the next step would be to complete the design. I mentioned that we're in concept, that your next step would be to go forward with construction documents. Obtaining building permits could happen as early as mid-May. I think that the construction period will probably be between four and six months, and that can be worked out between the city and county in terms of what decisions are made from here. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, and I think Anne Marie is as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go with council questions, public comment, and then discussion. Mr. Olbert, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. First of all, congratulations, good job on getting in the cost model estimate under budget. What happens, and I appreciate all of the work that's been done to include contingencies and whatnot, but let's say costs do end up, in reality, overrunning what the budget is. What's the arrangement for sharing the overrun amongst the various funding agencies?
Okay. I'm not, I don't know if there is an arrangement in place. What I do know is that even a more detailed item sheet than what you have, we do have specific alternates identified already that are currently included, and because of our work with the core team or the task force, we have prioritized these alternates. And so currently, on budget, they're included. If there is some problem, we can go to the lowest priority items and reassess, do we seek more funding, or do we eliminate that item? So there is a plan in place for what to do if there's an overage. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Again, I appreciate that. My question actually is a little bit different, which is basically would say that if, for whatever reason, all of those firewalls don't work, or they can't be tapped, or what have you, and the costs exceed budget, I just want to make sure I understand who's on the hook for the difference.
Okay.
And in my experience, when there are multiple funders for a project, that's often a point of discussion.
Sure.
It would not surprise me if it turns out the city is on the hook completely for whatever the overage is. But I just want to make sure I understand that, you know, before we move forward. The other question?
Did you get an answer to that question?
I don't think, I'm, maybe you can answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, I can answer it a little bit. It is the city's project, and I would expect that most likely, the city would be on the hook for that. However, as we go through the design process and then the bid process, we'd have the opportunity to have those conversations, particularly with the county library system, about whether or not there was additional funding there. As I believe you're all aware, the city itself has a fund of approximately $1 million that's been generated over the last 11, 12 years of the library through rents from library tenants that we've set aside, of which the $400,000 is coming in. So we would have the ability to tap that as a contingency, but we would also want to talk with the county library system about possibly matching any additional cost.
It occurs to me in particular, it might be fruitful to have those discussions, since the county library system is also likely to be a proponent for choices that would be made. My other question, kind of relating to this one, is would I be correct in assuming that there have been other similar projects that have taken place in neighboring communities?
Mm-hmm, yes, there have been.
And how have those turned out in terms of the financial perspective?
I mean, I don't, I don't have that information, actually. They've been delivered in multiple different methodologies. Some have been traditional design bid-build, some have been owner-driven, and some have been more cosmetic in nature, so they didn't require permits, so.
The most recent, I'm Anne Marie De Spain, I'm the County Library Director. Good evening. The most current remodel that's very similar to San Carlos was the Foster City Library, and I think that's been about two or three years now. ABA and Brad Cox was on that. That came in within budget, and there was no, and within contingencies, so there was, it was a shared partnership as well. So one of the things that hasn't been mentioned but was on the slide is the Friends of the Library, and certainly, you know, there's a very robust San Carlos Friends of the Library will continue to do fundraising that will help offset some of those decisions as well. But in Foster City, we scaled back the project a bit and didn't buy as many furniture items, and so we're phasing that in. That was the decision there.
Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli?
Could you go to the last slide that you had?
The timing?
Yes. So I would assume, and again, it's only an assumption, but if, assuming April, you sort of ready to, or I guess, I guess I'm reversed here, I apologize, May comes after April, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. Those should be reverted, or inverted.
Well, let's, let's assume that in May or June 1st, let's say, everything's ready to rock and roll. Would you probably close it during the summer? Wouldn't that be more logical, June, July, August, as opposed to during the school year?
I would imagine that would be, yeah.
Our target is summer, for exactly that reason. Because the use goes down.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. That's the only question.
Mr. Collins?
I don't have any questions. I think it's a wonderful project, and I wish you great luck on it.
Mr. Grokot?
Just a comment to Mr. Olbert's question, just from my experience on the...
Mr. Olbert?
I'm answering your question in part, because I, along with Randy, served on the library board for a number of years. And my experience is that, as Anne Marie said, with Foster City, but also with different types of projects, but with the Millbrae Library, and there was another one I had in mind, and I can't think of it right now, I think it was Redwood City, but they all were done within budget and turned out to be very nice projects, so. Oh, it was Samateo, actually, not Redwood City, but the Samateo Project. And I don't know if you've ever been to the Samateo Library, but it's a, it's quite the place to, it's larger, of course, and has, you know, coffee and coffee shop and that kind of thing, but it's a very nice project. So they've always done pretty well with those, or very well, I should say. The only question I had regards something, I wish I'd have thought of this before, because this looks so finished, if you will, but I, the second floor is not, doesn't seem to be a part of this project. Is that right?
Well, it is, it is used by the library, but I think there isn't, we are carpeting and painting up there, but we're not, I don't think you're planning on expanding the library into the second floor.
Okay. Because the only comment I have really, in terms of when I look around at our community and community needs and so forth, and I didn't see it addressed in this project, is exactly what we have here, which is a overhead AV system. And we don't really have that anywhere where if you want to do meetings with groups, or even when sometimes as a council, we'll alternatively meet in the library, in the rooms upstairs, and we don't have this kind of system, and it, and the meeting tends to suffer sometimes because we don't have that ability.
There is, I do have a slide that shows the various places where you could have a meeting, it could be an informal or a formal meeting, and I do have the upstairs rooms where there is the audiovisual equipment installed. So there can be formally scheduled meetings upstairs with the AV equipment, and then I know there's a plan to potentially install some smaller monitors in the library, so that may be of some use.
Okay. Well, I'll just throw that out there as, you know, something to be in mind of. Thank you.
Okay, the only question I have is actually for Anne, since it has to not do with this project, but with the future of the library. Has there been any discussion, because this is just the interior, of course, has there been any discussion of possibly doing like solar paneling on the roof, or anything like that?
That, that actually is a discussion for the city, since it's a city-owned facility. But your neighbor Belmont is looking at that right now.
Yeah, I read that, so, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect. Okay, well, that's all I wanted to ask. Okay, well, thank you very much, Brian. We're going to go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this project? Seeing none, we will go to council discussion. Mr. Olbert, do you have anything?
No, not at this point.
Mr. Grisilli?
Yep.
Mr. Collins?
No, sir.
Mr. Grokot?
Not really discussion, I just support the project, that's all.
And I think the only thing that, first of all, I'll thank you to all the library staff and everyone who worked on this. I think it's worth pointing out, though, that one-third of the costs here are coming through a donation or volunteers. We have the Friends of the Library donating $275,000, and then the Hofer donation of $257,000. So there's a lot of community support behind this project, and I think that's a great thing to point out, that one-third of these costs are being covered by volunteers and a donation. So with that, we will entertain a motion.
I move we accept the proposal.
We have to approve final conceptual design and project budget.
Okay. I'll move that we approve the final conceptual design.
And project budget?
And project budget.
Is there a second?
And anything else that we need to?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 8B, consideration of introducing ordinance number 1442, adding San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 8.27, model counting ordinance banning polystyrene foodware in restaurants in San Carlos. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As council will recall, at your last meeting, we had a discussion about the potential for a polystyrene ban at restaurants in San Carlos. It was a culmination of a one-year project that was started last year. We shared with you results of our outreach, where both restaurants that are not using polystyrene, and even 70% of the restaurants that do use it, are in favor of the city initiating a ban consistent with the county model ban. So tonight, in front of you, you have an ordinance which would add Chapter 8.27 to the municipal code that would establish such a ban using the county ordinance as a model. The ordinance references the county language by reference, and the ordinance envisions introduction tonight, a second reading at your next meeting, which would include a public hearing. public hearing, a 30-day effective period, and then the 90-day phase-in period that we talked about, the last meeting, which would result in a July 1 effective date. I guess the only other information, or two things I'd add, one is Dean Peterson from the County Health Department is once again in the audience, if you have any questions for him. And second, since we introduced this item last meeting, we've since gotten at the staff level increase from both Menlo Park and San Mateo that are now following the same process, and we've given them the staff materials as requested. So if that, any questions, be happy to answer. Otherwise, up to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Mr. Grokot? Do you have anything? Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question, Mr. Moore. I noticed, hang on, let me get to my note. There's a, apparently, they, owners can apply for an exemption from the ordinance.
That's correct.
Is there an application fee associated with that?
I don't believe so, but I asked Mr. Peterson what the process is. I believe that no exemptions have been yet applied for, as I understand it.
Thank you. Dean Peterson with Environmental Health through the mayor. There is no fee for the process to ask for an exception.
Thank you.
Dean, before you leave us, Mr. Moore, correct that no exemptions have been applied for?
Correct. No exemptions have been applied for, or granted.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Collins?
No other questions.
Mr. Grisilli?
None.
Mr. Olbert?
Nope.
Okay. We will have public comment. We have one speaker slipped so far. Pat Potter?
Pat Potter, San Carlos Green, San Carlos resident. We'd just like to support this ordinance, and hope you will vote for it. We think it's a very important thing to do, and it thrills us to think that those takeout carrier, containers will go in the green bin. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Is there any other public comment for this item? Seeing none, we will start discussion. Does anyone have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. We have to introduce the ordinance, remember.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number...
1442?
1442, ordinance of the city of San Carlos, adding Chapter 8.27 to the municipal code, prohibition on the use of polystyrene-based disposable food service ware by food vendors.
Is there a second?
Well, Mr., I'm sorry, I apologize. I did it wrong.
Well, there's just one additional item you need to add, is that you're setting the public hearing for adoption of the ordinance for March 13th, excuse me, March 12th, 2012.
Okay. And set the public hearing for this ordinance on March 12th, 2012.
So is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to public hearing, 9A, consideration of a conditional use permit and architectural review permitting the new monopine cellular antenna and associated equipment at 260 Shelford Avenue, accessory parcel number 049194080, and consideration of settlement agreement to resolve pending litigation, New Singleless Wireless PCS LLC DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus City of San Carlos, case number 411CV005674. Ms. Sanders? Costa Sanders, sorry.
Good evening, council members. The item before you is the revised application for a new AT&amp;T monopine site and associated equipment building at 260 Shelford Avenue. Brief overview of the history of this project. In June of 2011, the Planning Commission did approve conditional use permit, as well as architectural review for co-location, and that was utilizing an existing antenna site. And shortly after that, an appeal was filed of the decision of the Planning Commission. City Council, at their November 14 meeting, upheld the appeal, and thereby denied the conditional use permit and the architectural review request shortly after AT&amp;T filed a lawsuit. At your January 23 meeting, the council discussed a possible settlement of that. January 27, AT&amp;T submitted the revised application, that's before you this evening, and on February 7, AT&amp;T conducted a neighborhood outreach meeting on the revised submittal. Regarding the neighborhood outreach meeting, the city mailed the notice of the meeting on February 1. That notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site, as well as any other interested person that spoke at a public hearing, or expressed interest in this project. As they indicated, AT&amp;T conducted that neighborhood meeting on February 7 to review the revised project detail. They had their team present to answer any questions, and the meeting was attended by four neighbors. You're familiar with the site. It's at the Cow Water Site, accessed off Shelford. Here's Buckland, and then Anchor Lane to orient you. And the new antenna monopine site would be located approximately where that star is, just on the other side of the two water tanks. So this is the previous application that you denied, utilizing the existing cell site, and they were going to add on to it, and that was denied by the council. The revised project is a request, again, for conditional use permit, associated architectural review for six new panel antennas. These would be concealed within a 40-foot-tall monopine structure, and a new equipment building within a new fully enclosed, previously it was just with walls, now it's a fully enclosed building. Oh, sorry, this doesn't come out so great, but you do have it there. This is the location for the new monopine structure, and this is where the equipment building would be located, and then they're going to bore, for the utilities to connect for the power in this location. We have it slightly zoomed in view. The monopine structure would be here. There's two 10-foot-long boom arms that would hold the six panel antennas, and then this is the site of the equipment building. It's approximately nine feet by 35 feet. They do need to grade a little bit, approximately 32 cubic yards to get a level building site, and you would need to step in a bit to the equipment area. The antenna, the closest location of the antenna to the nearest property line is 23 feet at this location, and the building closest location to property line is 36 feet. This is the view of the new monopine structure. It'd be 40-foot at the top of the foliage. The pole itself, the structure pole, is 35 feet tall, and the antennas would be mounted, I believe, at the bottom of it, it's about a height of 29 feet. They are going to hold up the lower branches approximately 10 feet. There's oak trees that are adjacent to that, and that'll let the lower branches of the oak trees remain with, maybe some very minor trimming. Then the new equipment building that was mentioned is a concrete block building. It has eight-foot-tall sidewall at this side. You see it steps into the site just a little bit, solid roof. On this side, it has a taller 11-foot-six-inch wall, and the max, the total height of the building is 12-foot-six inches at the peak. Another view of the equipment building on this side, which faces the tanks away from the private properties, they do propose to have some louvered vents to allow for natural ventilation. That way, they do not need to have an air conditioning unit. The photo simulations, this would be if you were standing on the site and looking at the new monopine structure. You see the antennas are located here, and they would be painted to match the structure, as well as concealed with netting. This is obviously the existing situation. Further view, this is from Lynnhurst Avenue, and you see the tree at this location. And then if you were very close to the site on Anchor Lane, because you're so close, you don't quite have that view angle to see the tree. We have more detailed discussion in your staff report on compliance with the city code, generally, compliance with aesthetics. The antennas are proposed to be located within the monopine structure, would be screened from view to blend with the surrounding mature vegetation. As they indicated, they'd be concealed with some netting and painted to match. Noise, the study is included as an attachment to the staff report. The noise study analyzed shows compliance with the city's noise ordinance when located within the building. The applicant will also need to show post-installation compliance, as well as ongoing compliance by submitting a report to the city every three years. And this is also true with radio frequency. The new antennas, combined with the existing antennas onsite, are shown to be within, well within the FCC limits for radio frequency exposure, and they will be able to, required to show ongoing compliance every three years with that requirement. And tree protection, the applicant's arborist has prepared, I believe, two memos that are included in your report, a detailed analysis, as well as the city's arborist conducted a site visit, reviewed the plans. Both arborists conclude there will be very minimal damage to the heritage trees during construction, but we also have provisions in the use permit, as well as the settlement agreement, that if any of the heritage oak trees die as a result of this work, they would be required to replace them. The city's arborist is also here this evening, if you have any questions. I'll turn it over to Greg Rubens for a discussion on the settlement terms.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, city council members. You might recall from the last meeting that the concept of the settlement is to try and avoid the expense and risk of litigation. So after a lot of discussion with AT&amp;T's council, and also as a result of some of the site visits and work, what you have before you is a revised conditional use permit and a proposed settlement agreement. There's two resolutions that you're being asked to consider, one to approve each. The settlement agreement incorporates all the provisions of the use permit by reference, so the city's remedies, in the event of any kind of breach of the settlement agreement, would be either through the conditional use permit process and review process, or through the settlement agreement. The, as you can see from the settlement terms, the antenna that would be installed would be a modified stealth antenna, as described in the plans. The equipment would be located in a specified location, in a new fully enclosed center-block shelter with a roof. The oak trees, identified by the public as significant heritage trees that provide screening for the Shelford Site, would be protected during construction, as recommended by the city's arborist. Arborist's costs would be paid for by AT&amp;T. The whole, the concept of the, excuse me, in the last one, the landscape screening would be required to be replaced in the event of oak trees die as a result of the installation of the antenna or equipment. The concept here was to incorporate some of the concerns that the public raised and the council raised at prior meetings. I think that there's some other significant changes to the project that I think AT&amp;T will comment on as a result of the public outreach process, but you'll note that initially the, in the prior versions that you've been looking at, the antenna was taller, the antenna height's been reduced. The antenna panels are 35 feet, and then there's five feet of faux foliage on the monopine. I'm not sure how that's... Right, left click?
Right click.
Right click, okay. As I mentioned before, the settlement mirrors the terms of the conditional use permit, incorporates the terms by reference. The use permit is specifically conditioned on the execution of the settlement agreement by AT&amp;T, and the dismissal of the case with prejudice. If it's not dismissed, the use permit will be void. And then there's some exceptions that AT&amp;T has requested to the dismissal of the lawsuit. They basically relate to some contingencies that are some, there's some risk of them, but there's a low risk of many of them. So, the first one is the city does not issue the permits as required by the agreement. Of course, the city intends to do this, so that's a low risk. Third-party challenge is filed, that's always possible. AT&amp;T's Designated National Environmental Policy Act, that's what NEPA stands for, in our Phase 1 studies, raise unknown significant compliance issues. That's with regard to the NEPA, or if the engineers determine that the design is not technically feasible. That, I think those are also unlikely, because the antenna has, I understand, been previously reviewed, the old site, excuse me, has been previously reviewed, and it's very, a very short distance from the new antenna. The technical feasibility, I think for the same reason, technical feasibility, I think AT&amp;T is, and they can comment on this, has largely completed the technical review of the site, and as you've known from the, or reviewed from the coverage studies. AT&amp;T could, if any of the three above occur, AT&amp;T could either, could proceed with the litigation that presently exists, which would result, potentially, if they were to prevail in the original co-located antenna project, being potentially approved, or brought back for approval. City, although, also reserves all its defenses to that action. AT&amp;T could, though, if there's a third-party challenge, they could decide, of this new project, they could decide to go forward with this project, and deal with that potential litigation. So, in essence, what's before you is an opportunity to resolve the lawsuit at an early stage. This is sort of unusual, that it's a public process now, but I think because of the way this came forward, it's appropriate for the public to be able to comment on it, and that's why the process has gone through, the public outreach that it has, and the prior open session discussion of the potential settlement. So, I'm available for any questions that the council may have.
And AT&amp;T is available as well, correct?
Their team is here.
Okay. Yeah, I can see them all. Mr. Olbert, we'll start with you for questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start with something...
Well, Mr. Olbert, let me cut you off really quick, sorry. Let's do questions for Mr. Rubens first, if we have legal questions, and then we'll do questions for AT&amp;T, if you have those. That way, it splits it up, we don't have to have people keep...
Fine.
And yet, yeah, I see you were going with legal questions.
It's fortunate that my first question is a legal question, then, so, thank you. Mr. Rubens, let me ask you a question. I want to make sure I understand the third bullet point up here on these exceptions. I would translate that loosely as, if AT&amp;T determines that they, it turns out that the proposal they've come up with doesn't work, they get to sue us. They get to reactivate their suit.
They, where we are in the status of the old, of the lawsuit, I almost called it "old lawsuit," but the lawsuit is that we have not been served with a complaint. So, if, that's correct, if those studies show that this particular new proposal is not technically feasible, or can't pass the NEPA review, then they would have the option of pursuing the original lawsuit.
I guess I have a concern about that, in the context of, I can certainly understand their desire to deal with risks that either a third party or we might throw into the process, but that's their area of expertise. I mean, that's like saying, well, gee, you know, if we don't think our ideas, if we don't think we know what we're doing, we can sue you. We can reactivate the suit. Let me, without being more facetious about it, I think you understand the essence of my point. Is it possible to adjust what we're doing so that that was stricken, or is, are we looking at a take it or leave it package?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a take it or leave it package, but it would require some further review with AT&amp;T over fine-tuning that language. I can tell you that that particular paragraph was subject to a lot of discussion.
I can imagine.
And it was not, the language that's there is language that is being brought before you because AT&amp;T did not want to change it or remove it. I think partially because of the stage of the project, the plans you have are zoning or planning-type plans, they're not construction drawings, and those reviews have not yet occurred yet.
Two follow-on questions. Is it possible to defer making this decision until such point as that analysis has been completed by AT&amp;T, so that they actually know their plan will work?
I think that's a question for AT&amp;T.
All right. Then we'll defer that to them. Okay.
Let me fine-tune that. It's possible from our standpoint. I'm not sure if AT&amp;T would agree to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olbert. Mr. Grisilli, questions for Mr. Rubens?
So on the second point, you have the third-party challenge, so, in effect, what could happen is, a third-party challenge could be filed, and the city would have to, and if AT&amp;T wanted to go through with the lawsuit, the city would pay for its defense, its own defense.
No, on, that is different. If there's a third-party challenge, the city would be entitled to defense under our municipal code. That's on this application.
I guess I'm getting, I wasn't very specific. Is this going to cost us any money if a third-party challenge comes across, in legal fees?
The third, no, there wouldn't be any costs under the third-party challenge, because the municipal code provides... the municipal code provides that, for developer indemnity.
I'm sorry.
Developer indemnity.
Okay.
It's in our code.
All right. Mr. Olbert brought up a good point on, on number, number three, which he can ask AT&amp;T and I won't have to ask them, but as an editorial comment, that would, number three reminds me of a bait and switch. If, if they don't know that it's going to work, why are we even doing this? So I mean, that's just my comment editorially for your question.
It was a nice comment.
I don't know if it was a nice one.
Mr. Collins.
I don't know who these questions are to be directed at, so if they, should go to staff, just tell me. The Telecommunications Act says apparently that they get to put up whatever they want? Is that right?
Well, that's, at a cer, after a certain level of analysis, I suppose that might be partially true. What happens is, and this is kind of a thumbnail sketch of it again, just to remind the public and the council, if there's a demonstrated gap in coverage, then the Federal Telecommunications Act preempts the city from denying an application. We also can't discriminate against providers, so if there's other providers that have coverage in a certain area and we can't deny it to one provider over another, they are, under the law, are supposed to be treated equally. Once you get, once you have a gap in coverage, the city is constrained to aesthetics. So that's, I think why, not I think, that's why you have some discretion to approve the look and placement of the antenna on the site. We also have some purview over some, provided it's in our municipal code, over noise and other kind of general public safety issues, but not over our definitions. That's completely preempted.
It's not a question of this if, but how?
I, the, the gap in, these are all issues that are subject of the litigation, but hypothetically, if there's a gap in coverage, then the city is constrained. We do not have the option of denying a placement of an antenna that would fill that gap in coverage.
I think the rest of my questions are probably for staff or AT&amp;T, thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
So these are just questions for-
Mr. Rubens.
Mr. Rubens. In terms of process, when, when we denied their application, which there were, you know, a number of reasons to do so, one of them was aesthetics, some of them had to do with the issues of, was this really a reconstruction or adding to because of the size of the existing poles and so forth? Were we, you know, I wasn't sure, I didn't feel like some of the comments that we made was necessarily saying to AT&amp;T, do this and we'll, we'll approve whatever it is. I guess my question is, when we deny an application like that, just even generally, how far back in the process are we sending them? And would we not send them back to where they might look at other, you know, present other alternatives and work with the neighborhood, with the community on some, some of those alternatives, as opposed to just, you know, focusing on, this is the solution, this is what we heard, you know, I guess what AT, I don't want to speak for AT&amp;T, but it seems like, you know, they are responding to what they think they heard from us and focusing in on this monopine as a solution. Is that the process? What's the process?
The, what, the one process would be to, and I, and I'm trying just to talk about general, generalities here because there is pending litigation, so the process could, could have been to let the litigation play out and, or AT&amp;T decided to file the litigation. I suppose they could drop the litigation and reapply with a brand-new application. That would have been one choice, they didn't take that choice. So the reality is we have this pending litigation. It is, this does happen from time to time, there are cases that talk about the process if you want to settle litigation, and if it's a land use decision like this, that's why it's brought before you as a public hearing, use, as a use permit in a public hearing. That's the process in order to effectuate the settlement and this new use permit, it had to be this type of a process. So I, the, the, is it unusual? Yes, it doesn't happen all the time, but if the council wants to entertain a settlement at this point, this is the, the only option, this is the only process.
So if I can paraphrase, what I'm hearing you say is that we were, we're sort of shoved into this either-or solution. Either approve the monopine or we're moving forward with our litigation, which probably answers my other question, which I wasn't sure if it was for you or for AT&amp;T. And my other question was going to be, why the lawsuit to begin with? Because I felt like when we had our hearing, we gave AT&amp;T what I thought was a pretty viable option, which is go meet with the neighborhood, talk to them about your project, talk to them about what, what you think are some design options, and then do some back-and-forth with the neighborhood on what those are, and then ultimately, you, obviously AT&amp;T has to make a choice regardless of, not regardless, but you know, inclusive of what they've heard from the neighborhood, and then bring a project forward.
You know, that's-
Because we did, excuse me, I just want to add, because we did say, we leaned, I felt like, you know, we gave some ideas, we talked about a monopine, but we also very clearly said, go work with the neighborhood. What hasn't happened here is there hasn't been any discourse with the neighborhood that's been sufficient, that we felt like was sufficient. And so that's why I asked this question about the process, you know?
Well, I think that the threshold question, I think you'll have to ask AT&amp;T about why did they decide to pursue the lawsuit rather than simply file a new, new application?
Okay, fair enough, I'll ask them when they-
I can't answer that question.
Okay, yeah, I understand, sure.
But I, I think we are, I think you hit the point. I mean, we are, we're in a situation where there's a pending lawsuit filed against the city. This is an option to, to resolve it. I know I sound like a broken record on that, but I think it's part of my job to bring this option to you, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Rubens, I only have one question. On the bottom, little note, it says if any of the above occur, AT&amp;T has the option of proceeding with the litigation on its original application. So that means the litigation is not the monopine, the litigation is the original structure that everyone, that the neighborhood was adamantly against, correct? So if we were to lose that litigation, that's the structure that would be put up. Given, I mean, of course, there could be, you know, variances with whatever judge said, but-
I, I wouldn't want to predict the, the outcome, but that's the potentiality that, the original application is for a co-location on the, on the existing pole.
And the major item in that litigation will be the fact that there is a gap in coverage, correct?
That would be, that's one of the preliminary findings that the court would have to make, and that is an issue in dispute.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Rubens? Okay, we will go with AT&amp;T then, if they want to send a representative up. I'm sure we have questions for them. You want to start, Mr. Olbert? Or we can start with Mr. Grokot if you'd like, I don't, meaning to pick on you.
No, no, that's quite all right, I'll leave it up, Matt, feel free to, pardon me, Mr. Grokot, feel free.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, and sorry, if you would like to introduce yourself, most likely, and we're going to go through your, if you, do you have sides for us, or?
No, I don't.
Okay, but if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Sandy Nichols and I'm a partner with the law firm of Allen Matkins in San Francisco. I was engaged to serve as a trial counsel to AT&amp;T in the federal court lawsuit against the city to enforce the rights that we believe we have under the Telecommunications Act concerning the application for 260 Shelford Avenue. And I apologize, I lost my voice this weekend at my nephew's wedding, so bear with me. In any case, as the council knows, we did file the lawsuit back in November and there's been some discussion this evening as to why we did that. In part, it was because there was a tolling agreement that was entered into by the city and AT&amp;T that actually required AT&amp;T to file the lawsuit by a certain date, and we did do that. So in order to comply with the tolling agreement, that was necessary. But we also filed the lawsuit because we need to build this project. We did demonstrate there was a significant gap in coverage. We, we believe that we presented the case for that, the least intrusive means available, but nonetheless, after we filed the lawsuit, while we were all ready to go at my office, my client said, we don't want you to serve the city. We don't want you to serve the city with the complaint because that will automatically require them to start incurring a bunch of fees and costs, and what we'd like to do instead is meet with the city staff, continue to meet with the neighbors, and see if we can't work out a resolution to address the concerns that were expressed. And the fact is that there has been significant discussion with city staff, not just by AT&amp;T staff, but with the whole team of consultants that we have before you this evening again. And that team of consultants was made available to staff and to the neighbors at the February 7 meeting, as Ms. Sanders mentioned. So there has been significant public outreach in connection with this project. What the proposal that you see before you today as part of the settlement and the CUP that's before you reflects a different project that responded to the concerns that we heard here on the prior application at the study session. I personally attended that, took copious notes as I'm prone to do, and went back and talked with our staff. At the community outreach meeting, we also listened very carefully, our consultants listened very carefully, and the draft proposal that was originally presented was in fact modified since that community outreach meeting to achieve the project that's before you today, excuse me. So significant time and effort has been expended by AT&amp;T, its staff, its council, and also by the city and its staff and its council to put together what we think is a very sensible resolution for this dispute. It accomplishes many of these objectives that were of concern to the community. But I guess what I'm also here to tell you is that we're not going to withdraw our lawsuit and wait for, you know, additional time for the studies to be prepared. Your question, Councilmember Olbert, is a fair one. You know, why not wait? The fact is, under the federal law, we are required to serve our complaint by March 22nd if we don't reach a settlement in this matter. There's time limits that are out of our, out of our control, it's within the court's sole discretion, and the rules say you get four months. So our four months is going to be up on, on March 22nd. And so if the recommended resolution of this matter, recommended by staff and by the city attorney, is rejected, then we do need to go ahead and serve our complaint on the city. And once we do that, we're off to the races, because I've already gotten a schedule from the court that says all of the various deadlines that we have to meet in terms of our meet and confers with the city, our various discovery schedules that we have to meet, all of that is not in our control, it's solely in the court's control. So that, that's where we are right now. But, but why we are here is to answer your questions concerning this proposal. Again, we have all of the, the various technical consultants here to respond to your specific questions, that is outside my area of expertise. And with respect to the legal issues that you've addressed with your council, certainly Mr. Rubens was well able to answer those. If you have any additional questions for me that don't amount to legal advice to you, I'm happy to answer those, otherwise I'd be happy to introduce any of our consultants.
Okay, we'll just, we'll go one at a time, Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your introductory remarks. By the way, I'm afraid I didn't catch your name.
Sandy Nichols.
Ms. Nichols, thank you. Ms. Nichols, one question I have about that exception that I was talking to Mr. Rubens about is, quite honestly, whatever things are not within AT&amp;T's control, clearly a technical evaluation of their own design is within their control. And I, I for the life of me do not understand why that is contingency. Why has not AT&amp;T done whatever is necessary before we have reached this point here today, or whatever day we're going to be making a decision on, to remove that contingency? I just don't understand that.
Well, Councilmember Olbert, the part, part of it is this. What you have before you, as was evidenced in the CUP that Mr. Rubens presented, are zoning drawings. So we have not developed the full construction drawings, further testing is required, the NEPA studies, which must be done by law, have to be done. What those turn up is outside of our control. So our goal is to get this project built. Our goal is not to get an out out of this project, it's not a bait and switch. We are not here wasting your time or ours on spending money on a project that we don't think can be built. We think it can be built, but we don't know for absolutely certain that it can be built. So unless and until we know for absolutely certain that it can be built, we have to have that condition. But we are not here just trying to kick the can down the road, we're trying to get our project built. So again, this is, it's not with the intention of how do we find a way out of this, it's if we have to get out of this because we can't build it, then we need to have the right to get out of it.
I guess, as a follow-up, I, I appreciate your answer, but I still do not understand why the contingency cannot be removed. It is a, it is, unless I'm missing something, it is a technical analysis of the design. If there are things that, site access that AT&amp;T would need to have in order to remove and to complete, it's an analytical work, I don't understand why a request or a demand was not made to get that access. I'm fundamentally left with the issue here of, and I, I accept your notion that you're, that, people like to imagine conspiracy theories all over the place, and I accept the notion that that's not what's going on here, but I hope you also understand from my perspective, that putting a contingency in a settlement agreement that is, we have no control over, that AT&amp;T has complete control over, just, that's just not good business.
Well, let me suggest an opposite conclusion, if, with all due respect, which is, the city has nothing to lose by including that in there, because if this settlement agreement is signed, what it provides for is a 60-day window within which those contingencies either have to be met or we have to dismiss a lawsuit. So by entering into the settlement, by approving the CUP for the monopine and allowing those conditions in there, what happens is, then we can go to court, I can go to court, without having served the city on an application to the court to say, we want you to allow us additional time to serve the city with this complaint for at least, it would have to be more than a 60-day period to allow that to expire, so we can make sure that these conditions are met. In the meanwhile, the city is not incurring any additional costs or fees. We are, we're incurring additional costs and fees for these studies, but the city is not losing anything. So at the end of the 60-day period, if it turns out we can't do the, build the project because it's technologic, technically infeasible, or because there's NEPA conditions that we simply can't, can't meet, then in fact, we will need to, we won't dismiss the complaint and we will go forward with the lawsuit. Our, our hope is that that isn't the case. Our hope is that after the 60-day period, we will be dismissing the lawsuit and we'll go forward and build our project.
So am I to understand that it would take, that AT&amp;T is comfortable that it would take 60 days to clear this, that particular contingency?
Under the settlement agreement, we have 60 days.
How many days have elapsed between when the council rejected the original proposal and today?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I suspect it's more than 60. And my question would be, why wasn't an effort made to remove the contingency before today? If it's just a matter of passage of time?
Well, again, there was not even a, a project that the city and AT&amp;T had agreed upon in terms of a compromise, you know, to put forward to this council until recently. And again, a lot of that came out of the meeting with the community outreach and additional changes that were met then. So there's been a lot of back and forth between city staff and AT&amp;T staff and consultants, as well as the community, in terms of putting together the proposal that's before you this evening.
Mr. Olbert, just interrupt, sorry, Ms. Nichols, it's been over 100 days, if you wanted a number.
Thank you.
No problem.
The last time I checked, I think 100 is bigger than 60.
That's, you're right.
The, one other clarifying question, and I'll hand the baton to somebody else. So the, so your understanding is that there were significant design changes made as a result of the neighborhood meeting in early February?
Yes, there were.
Okay, when we come time to discuss this with staff, I would like to have staff's input on that, because that's not consistent with what my recollection is, but my recollection could be wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Olbert, Mr. Grisilli?
If you'd like, I could have the AT&amp;T-
We'll refer that to staff, thank you, though. Mr. Grisilli.
Ms. Nichols, I hate acronyms, I just horror them, NEPA. Could you please tell me what that means?
That's National Environmental Policy Act.
Okay, and who does that study?
That would be- That would be a consultant engaged by AT&amp;T.
Okay. How long does that study take? I know you can't answer that, but someone there I'm sure can. At least I would hope so. Pick a man, any man.
I heard 90 days, is that correct?
Eight to 90, is it?
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, you have to go to the microphone.
Sure. So between 16 and...
Could you identify yourself, too, please?
I'm sorry, Tasha Skinner, AT&amp;T Mobility. The answer to that question is 60 to 90 days. And also, in addition to the NEPA, we do a Phase 1 environmental report, which involves testing the soils. And that report can take up to 120 days. So these are to, in this every project, that involves ground disturbance, requires AT&amp;T to do, or internally to protect AT&amp;T from liabilities, environmental liabilities, that could occur on a property that couldn't contain contaminated soil.
I'm familiar with Phase 1.
Correct.
In other words, you haven't done Phase 1 before on this?
Okay, so, no, not on this particular design.
On this design?
No, correct. That is correct. Not on this design. This design was completed in response to the most recent set of drawings that we have that were submitted to the city are dated February 17th. So what you have before you are all the changes and culminations of what have been considered by the community and by AT&amp;T on February 17th. So those are the drawings that will be used for the Phase 1 report and for the NEPA report, and that's when the clock starts for us to submit these reports.
And you know, I think I may have created some confusion myself, and I want to clarify it. The 60-day period under the settlement agreement wouldn't begin tonight.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Sound here is really poor. Would, would not?
Would not begin this evening. So the 60-day period under our settlement agreement begins after all necessary permits to complete, the plans are issued. So again, during that entire timeframe, so when we submit the construction drawings, the permit is issued, there would be no lawsuit filed against the city during that timeframe. So we would want to complete all of the pre-work, if you will, all of the entitlement work and the permitting work. And then the 60-day period starts for the studies. Again, there's no downside to the city in terms of this delay. None.
So let me understand. Let's assume we didn't have a change. Let's assume whatever, 100 days or whatever it was, you came in with your proposal and we said, "Fine, go co." You had not done a NEPA report on that one? When you came in?
I'm sorry. On which one?
On the original one.
No, there was a NEPA study that NEPA report had begun. That timeline had begun on the original design. This design, because it is completely different, would have to start, that application process would have to start from scratch. That means several, and AT&amp;T has to commission from scratch all the third-party vendors that would, for both the Phase 1 and NEPA reports.
So, but the other one, you had started the NEPA?
Correct.
We hadn't approved that yet? It was in process?
That is correct.
Why didn't NEPA start on this one? Or couldn't it have started on this one?
Because we cannot start until we have finalized drawings. Because what we want to give to our professional environmentalists is the final set of drawings by which they will use to conduct their analysis and report. And that report will be, those set of drawings will be dated February 17th.
Okay. And in Phase 1, I'm a little confused. Isn't dirt dirt? I mean, you're going to basically build it. Aren't you building it in the same spot?
No, we are not.
How far away are you?
I don't know the exact number. I can show you, I can have someone show plans, but that...
Wait, wait, someone should.
Three feet, two feet, one foot, 30 feet?
From the original, well, the original structure was already there. We're building a new structure.
I understand, but the dirt's the dirt. Dirt didn't move. So my confusion is, you were going to build a pole, you weren't going to build a pole, you were going to add on to a pole, you were going to build a structure. How far away, how far away is this one from the original one?
This is Tom Durkis.
This is Tom Durkis, but approximately 20 feet.
So you're saying that's 20 feet away? Away because of?
The location changed. We addressed the location changing. If I could point to the...
So you moved the pole?
Yes. Well, if I could point to the picture, the original picture on the left was what was going to be extended, the poles were going to be extended there. So we're putting in the tree right here that was not going to be there, okay? And then the structure is now moved a few feet over, and it's elongated.
So you're removing the original, the pole that's there now, then?
I beg your pardon.
Or, I beg your pardon, you were going to add on to somebody else's pole? I'm confused.
Correct. We were going to add on to the existing structure.
Which is already somebody else's pole?
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Collins? I'm more confused than ever, and I apologize. Ms. Nichols, I need you to, forgive me if I'm just not getting this, but this technical feasibility study that NEPA does, if I'm hearing that it takes 60 to 100 days, when does that start and when does this 60-day window for filing the lawsuit or progressing with the lawsuit go forward? It sounds to me like the time it takes for the NEPA study to be done extends beyond the time you have to go to court. Am I not reading that correctly? Am I misunderstanding that?
The 60-day period, and again, I apologize because I think I created that confusion for you, but the 60-day period in terms of dismissing the lawsuit or not doesn't begin to run until all of the necessary permits are issued to AT&amp;T.
Okay. And does that mean that the NEPA study has been done at that point?
The NEPA study would likely be in progress at that point.
It would be in progress.
Yeah, because we'd have the construction drawings by then.
Okay. So, and I don't know if you can answer this, but the people who did the drawings, are they, you know, sort of sure, kind of sure, very sure that this thing, that this structure and this new monopine is going to pass muster with NEPA? I want to feel comfortable about it. Because I realize that we are, you know, we have limited options. So I want to really feel comfortable, and I want the neighbors to feel comfortable about it, too.
Well, the point is, if it doesn't, if there are issues that come up in terms of NEPA compliance that we can't satisfy, then we're not going to go forward with that project. I mean, so that's, again...
Okay, so what happens then?
Then we would go back to the original project.
Original project.
I mean, our hope is that this is going, that no significant issues are going to arise as a result of this. They already did do the NEPA study in connection with the first project. This one, though, as Ms. Skinner mentioned, we have to do it by law because it's a different project. So our hope is that this one's going to go through as well. But for the benefit of the citizens here, if there are significant environmental issues that we could not mitigate, then we would not go forward with that project.
Okay. So obviously, you've done a lot of these projects. AT&amp;T has put up cell towers everywhere. So what I'm looking for is some level of confidence that this project, as redesigned, is going to pass muster with the NEPA study.
Again, that's our goal as well. I mean, you know, here, the changes have to be analyzed, and that's not something that we can dictate. We have to have an independent consultant who does that analysis, just as we did with the first project. So again, the reason for doing that is to protect the environment. So if there are issues that are raised that we can address in the project, then those would be addressed. If there are issues that cannot be mitigated, though, that come up, again, we're not looking for those issues. But if something comes up that we can't mitigate to the satisfaction of the NEPA requirements, then we would revert to the litigation.
I think maybe you understand our concern that we're potentially approving a project that may be impossible to build. And that's why we're a little nervous about this whole thing.
But if that is the case, and again, I would defer to Mr. Rubens because, as your counsel, he can provide you with whatever comfort he wants to provide you on that. But from our perspective is, if you are approving this project and it ultimately is not technically feasible, it's not going to get built. So again, I would defer to your counsel to advise you on that, but I personally don't see the risk to the city of that.
Wait, excuse me, I got to clarify something because I'm sorry. That just seems like the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. You're saying if this isn't feasible technically, it's not going to get built, but you're withholding the right to sue us on the original one? So the structure that we didn't want to begin with is what you would sue us on, and you're saying there's no risk to the city? That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard.
No, what I'm saying of building a project that's not technically feasible.
But you'll build a project that we don't want, and it's dead.
We will pursue our rights under the Telecommunications Act in the lawsuit, yes.
Yeah, okay, just making sure that I follow that. Sorry, Mr. Collins.
Well, I think I'm going to, I'm going to pass for now. I think I'm done.
Mr. Growcock?
First question, tolling agreement you mentioned. Because I asked why a lawsuit, and you said tolling agreement. Tolling agreement was based on the original application?
Correct.
Mr. Rubens?
Well, earlier in the process, the AT&amp;T had an interpretation that the shot clock was about to run, the shot clock being the time in which the city needs to take final action on a facility such as this. So in order to extend the undisputed time as to when the time ran on their ability to file a lawsuit based upon the shot clock issue and the city's final action on the project, I entered into a tolling agreement to extend those deadlines. So that tolling agreement had a deadline of November 24, 2011, for AT&amp;T to file their lawsuit. And that's because, as you may recall, the appeal process had been continued a few times. So that was the solution to that, to extend those deadlines. Otherwise, the lawsuit would have been filed 60 days sooner.
You guys understand that?
Yes.
Yep.
And then you said you filed the lawsuit because you need to build the project. So why does, why does, why does including the neighborhood in some meetings and discourse prevent you from building a project?
I don't believe that that prevents us from building a project. The purpose of those meetings was with the encouragement of the city council, and frankly, AT&amp;T intended to do it regardless, was after this council denied, approved the appeal and thereby denied the original project. It wished to solicit additional input, as this council suggested that it do. In fact, my memory is that more than one of you was disappointed it hadn't been done by the time of the study session. In fact, AT&amp;T had wanted to do that and had been rebuffed. After that study session, the meeting was noticed and, in fact, held, and four residents attended. But we had our entire team of consultants there. So the fact that we did community outreach isn't what's stopping us from doing this project. What's stopping us from doing the project right now is that we have pending litigation, and we're trying to resolve that through this proposal here. But if this doesn't work out, then we go back to the pending litigation to pursue our original project so we can build it.
Is there any, I don't know, any legal term on what is considered significant outreach? So it's whatever you want it to mean?
I'm not sure where you're going with that, but I think...
Well, here, I'll tell you where I'm going with it, then. A week's notice to residents, so you give them seven days, including the weekend, from when you mailed the letter and when you're going to hold the meeting. And then the success of your outreach is four people show up, and you consider that significant outreach and engagement of the community. You have a different definition of significant outreach than I do. How much outreach, by comparison, you said significant staff time and correspondence. Was that by email? Was that by phone calls? Was there written documentation? Did you have meetings? And please weigh that, what you did with our staff compared to what you did with our residents.
Well, I would say as to your rhetorical question, all of the above. As to the notice, that notice was given by the city, not by AT&amp;T.
So wait, so you guys didn't do any outreach essentially on your own? You required the city to do it? You guys just showed up at a site and the city got people there?
No. I would...
Sorry, Mr. Growcock, sorry about that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Shia Macloney. Nice to meet those of you I haven't met. I just want to start by saying that our relationship, our ongoing relationship with the community is of paramount importance to AT&amp;T, and we try to demonstrate that, not just through words, but through our actions. And over a period of at least two months or so last year, prior to the hearing in November, we did reach out to the appellant's. And I think there were other interested parties in that email chain. I have at least four or five, probably six or seven emails back and forth with a group of appellant's last year where we really tried to engage them in a meeting, and ultimately they chose not to meet with us. But we were really excited that we had another opportunity to reach out to the community on February 7. And we put a lot of effort into that meeting and had a format that we thought would best allow residents to get their individual concerns addressed. So we had experts in various discrete areas that we heard residents were concerned about, such as RF emissions, aesthetics, that kind of thing. And residents were able to go from table to table and get their concerns, I think, addressed. Of course, we couldn't control how many people attended the meeting, but we were happy that we had the opportunity to try to reach out an additional time.
Last question. You talk about litigation on the original application. I would be curious to know what you consider to be the original application because the residents in the area studied your plans quite in depth and discovered, for instance, that the poles that you were counting on to be, I believe it was eight inches in diameter, were actually, in fact, only five inches in diameter. And so the ability, we don't know, but for sure, but I guess only a study would prove it, but the ability of your project to actually happen on the existing poles would be in question because those poles were not what you thought they were. So what is your interpretation of original application?
The lawsuit lays out the factual basis for our claims, particularly on the shot clock, on the application that was ultimately denied by the city council by upholding the appeal. And that, in toto, is the subject of our lawsuit.
Thanks.
I'm going to get to you in a second, Mr. Grisilli. Can I ask you a couple of questions, though? That's, thank you. This one's actually for Ms. Skinner, since she brought up the technical about NEPA. You said we couldn't start a NEPA study until we had finalized drawings, correct?
Zoning drawings, that's correct, not construction.
And you guys had those in the original application?
We had, I'm sorry?
You had those in the original application, you had the drawings necessary to start a NEPA study?
Yes.
Even though the drawings you had were proven by non-engineers to be fake, to not actually be buildable without going and actually replacing the entire structure, even though your application was just to add on? I don't understand what you're confused about. You guys submitted drawings to us that were proven that they can't actually be built that way because you guys weren't even able to measure the poles that you were building on. So how do you do a NEPA study?
Okay, so when we go to the construction drawings, which is really when we identify the true viability of the construction elements, and we verify what is the existing structure components, and there's engineers that go and identify what the correct diameters are, and those are input into the construction drawings. And when there are inconsistencies with what may have been provided to our third-party consultant who's performing the engineering, environmental studies, those get replaced, and the report will get supplemented with the correct, accurate construction drawings. That's what happens.
So you just intend to possibly change your application as you go along, as you find inconsistencies?
That happens often. If there are elements or components that have, require an environmental compliance report to be supplemented with correct information, sure, we find out all the, sure, we find out at the construction drawings all kinds of things that we couldn't possibly know at the zoning drawing stage, wherein, that's correct.
How often do you find that you are attempting to build an...
I mean...
Wait, excuse me, Ms. Skinner, I'm speaking to... Wait, excuse me, Ms. Skinner, I'm speaking to you.
Excuse me.
How often do you find that you are going to build an add-on, but it actually turns you're gonna do a complete tear-down and rebuild? Does that happen often, that you make that large of a mistake?
I don't know that that is a lar, when you say that we have a tear-down, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't say it. This is our construction manager, so he can speak to this better than I can.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Nolan. I basically, I think, to answer your question, a lot of times with existing structures when we're looking to modify approach, there's additional weight, there's additional structural issues that sometimes prevent us from being able to go forward with that approach. So, often, we have to backtrack and look at other ideas.
Okay, and because the only reason I'm bringing this up is you have a, you have a little statement in there that says if it's not technically feasible, you reserve the right to sue us on the original application. And I think by and by through this entire process, you've proven that you guys technically have not given us real drawings, you haven't given us anything. So, there's a distinct possibility that's gonna happen and we're gonna get sued on the original application anyways. I mean, I'm just, that, that's why I think the entire council up here is having an issue with that because your original drawings were so bad that a group of non-engineers was able to see how faulty they were. And yet, you're holding a little wild card that says, well, you know, if we make a mistake and it's not technically feasible, we're gonna sue you on the original application anyways. So, that's, I think, where you're seeing the major worry up here from the councils. You hold that wild card, even though your attorney says it's in our best interest to have that there.
If I may interject again, often when we're, you know, approaching existing structures, especially co-location structures, we're subjected to a variety of variables, you know, that are, that reside with the other carriers. And so, we have to answer to that too. And I think in this particular case, because of the gap issue that we had and because of some of the structural complexities that we had to the site, upon review, we were looking at another approach that would be in both of our best interests.
Okay, Mr. Casilla?
I was trying to, you know, Mr. Collins is very concerned and I understand completely, you know, about the situation with NEPA and, am I saying it right, NEPA? Could you give me a sense of, and in a way, I'm trying to help you on this one? Can you give me a sense of what history you have in getting things approved or not approved with NEPA?
It's not, just to clarify, the question was the history of getting things approved or not approved through NEPA. It's not a question of approval through NEPA. It's a question of identifying the environmental issues and the rest.
Okay, then I'll, let me rephrase. Maybe you could identify three environmental issues that are up there?
And, and I'm not, and I'm not qualified to speak to that.
Okay, who is? Nobody? You've got all these people sitting here and nobody can answer that question?
We can. We can try.
Oh, let's try, hit, pick a number.
Hi, well, my name's Steve Everett.
Are you the CEO or, no, I'm sorry, just kidding.
No, 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 no. My name's Steve Everett, consultant to AT&amp;T. What we've run into on this, we already had done a full NEPA shipper report on this site. And that was based on the fact that there was gonna be a minimal amount of ground disturbance.
Right, because you're just gonna add on to the pole.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
Now, what we're doing, we actually went up on the 17th and we drilled down to considerable depth. And if we went down to about 15 feet or more, it was, as I said, done on the 17th. We received the geological report on that last week. As a result of the, as Staffman Lisa mentioned, the stepping in of the equipment shelter and then also with this type of structure, we'll potentially have what they refer to as a pier or case on piling, okay? So consequently, there's a great more ground disturbance than would take place in the original application. That necessitates a NEPA review.
Understand. So, basically it's-
That's what we're in the process of doing right now.
Basically, it's soil and geology.
That's primarily what it is.
Primarily, I'm not gonna hold you to that because you're stepping up to try to solve it.
Really, what we're kind of looking at here, sir, is any kind of environmental contamination, pollution, any of that type of stuff, that's really what NEPA is all about.
Right.
That's what we're searching for.
So, basically, you're looking at the soil that you're gonna be building on.
Right.
See if there's any toxicity in that soil or any kind of problems with that soil.
And if we're moving just a little bit, just a few inches on the top, that's not a big problem.
I understand, but you're gonna be doing a little more than that. I understand you have to go down. But I mean, basically, it's a soil situation for all intents and purposes. And that's the environmental thing that has to be proven by NEPA or approved by NEPA or whatever else. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to identify that there, whatever, that the soil is really the issue here. It's not the trees or some of the other stuff. It's for all intents and purposes, it's the soil. And that's why they have, it's gonna take them a little while to figure out, especially if they've dug down or gone down to find out what it is.
Mr. Albert?
Just a quick follow-on question to the gentleman who is answering that. So, you said the drilling was done on the 17th?
Yes.
Was that the 17th of February?
Yes.
Any reason why that couldn't have been done sooner? What was the basis of the timing of that?
Part of it was getting a permit from San Mateo County. And the other part was coming up with the, first part was coming up with design that we felt was suitable and then we had to get a drilling permit from the county.
How long did it take to get the permit from San Mateo County?
The permit actually took about business days, about five business days. We applied on a Friday and then got it for the following Friday.
So, it sounds like probably a bigger, a bigger time component was the design.
Pardon?
A bigger time component was the design.
Yeah, we're coming up with the design and then once we realized that in fact we would have to go down, we would have to have a pier or case on type piling, then we decided that we really should get some soils testing done to see exactly what we may have down there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins, you have another question?
Ms. Nichols, I don't know if you're the one that can answer this. Maybe one of your crew can help you. My question is, since there were all these changes made, how many of those changes were a direct result of the meeting with the residents on the 7th? Do they come up with some specific things that you guys said, hey, that's a pretty good idea. Let's take a look at that.
Ms. Nichols, before you, before you answer that question, no, this, that's a very valid question because I'm sure we're gonna ask staff of it. I think the real question Mr. Collins is asking is, between January 27th and February 27th, how much did this plan change? Because the only public meeting you had was on February 7th and you're saying there were major changes based on this public meeting with four people. So, between the 27th and 37th, in that specific month, how much have these changed? I want to know the specifics.
So, between January 27th and February 27th?
Right. A few of the changes I can go through specifically?
Yeah.
Okay, the original monopine was gonna be 48 feet in height. That has been reduced to 40 feet in height, okay? The original monopine was 36 inches in diameter, okay? That has been reduced down to 18.08 inches at the top, tapering to 14. I beg your pardon, 18.08 inches tapering to 14 at the top. I had it mixed up, sorry.
So, it gets, it's fat to skinny?
Correct, correct. And it went from fat to really skinny in the revision.
Yeah.
We've clarified and selected a revised tree. The original monopine that was put into photo simulations was of generic nature. We've clarified with a manufacturer to select one and revise photo sims so it blends into the environment, okay, better. And then, we added a roof to the actual equipment enclosure, the gabled roof as well as a door. So, it encloses the complete facility. Those are the main technical-
Okay, thank you, thank you for that specific answer. That's where you're looking, right, Mr. Collins?
And just a follow-up to that, and were there any suggestions that the neighbors had that you couldn't accommodate? That you can recall?
Not to my recollection, other than not having the site.
Other than, I'm sorry?
Not having the site.
Not building it.
Oh, not building it at all?
Yeah, but not specifically.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for AT&amp;T? If not, we can go to staff. Okay, thank you, Ms. Skinner.
Thank you very much.
Or, Ms. Nichols, I'm sorry. We have questions for staff, so, Mrs. Costa Sanders, you wanna come on up? Okay, Mr. Grokot, you wanna start us off?
First, maybe clarify something that AT&amp;T just said. The plans that I have that were submitted on January 27th represented a 40-foot tall pole. The letter of request I received afterwards reflected a 48-foot tall pole. So, I asked them to clarify that.
So, wait, they give you plans that said 40 feet, then they send in a letter that said 48?
Correct.
So, when I actually asked from January 27th, February 27th, there was actually no change? Because they sent a letter in between?
I did not see a change in the plans that were represented at the community meeting. Now, they may have planned to build a 48-foot tall pole, but that's not what's reflected on the plans.
Okay.
And then, they are correct, the plans changed to include the roof on the building structure. And that's, the one change I saw was the roof on the building structure. They also, as a result of the site inspection, changed from a trench detail to a boring detail because we saw conflicts with the trees.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grokot?
Sure. I wanted to ask again, on the original project, what's called the original project. I know from my experience in my industry that, for instance, if you submit a set of plans on a house for a remodel and it has a certain extension, extent of remodel being done to it, the city requests you to call it something else. And I, I can't remember what exactly those terms are, but I know, for instance, on your title block, if you say, you know, this is an addition and remodel and it's going too far on the remodel and too many walls are being torn down and so forth, then you're requested to ask, I think it's, they just ask you to call it new.
I think it's just called new construction and it qualifies for fire sprinklers.
New construction, exactly. That's right, and some other, some other things.
Correct.
So, in this case, you know, plans to attach to an existing structure, which they were asking to do and that was part of their application and part of the supposedly, the, as I understood it, to be some of the ease in getting the project approved. And then, it's discovered by non-engineers, by residents, that the, these aren't, these aren't eight-inch existing poles at all, they're five inches. And I'm wondering how far down that trickles, does that impact then new foundation work? And when do we, when do we call it as a city? We say, hey, this is not what you presented to us. This is not adding to existing structure. This is taking down what's there and putting in new structure. And we call it a new home, if you will. And it changes the whole dynamics in terms of NEPA and approvals and, you know, because if we have to get into the soil, put in a new foundation, I don't know. Do we know what that trickle-down effect is?
It seemed in that situation, it was a rather minor change, is a minor upsizing in the pipe size.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know what the trickle-down would have been, if that would have evolved a more detailed structural evaluation, you know, more subgrade work. I wouldn't know that without having a structural engineer evaluate it.
So, we probably wouldn't have known that until it had gotten to building and then they would have made those adjustments and gone through those approvals and so forth.
Right, but certainly, if we were aware that they needed to take down the entire structure and replace it like kind, that's an opportunity to improve on that situation. So, that would have been a different conversation, I think.
Right, you can, you just confused me, I'm sorry.
Well, if we were aware at the planning stage, that they were gonna take the entire structure down and replace it exactly as it existed previously, that's an opportunity to have a conversation of, how can we improve that situation, rather than replace it exactly? So, I think at a planning stage, we might have looked at it a little differently.
So, that could have been a redirect as well?
Possibly.
At the planning stage, right, okay. Because, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, if I'm really stuck on, you know, we're talking about the original application, I'm questioning, what is the original application? Because if it was in such error that residents from our city found problems with it and then we don't know where that would exactly go if they were to reapply and you're telling me that planning, becoming aware of that, could have also redirected it? I don't see how we have a original application myself, but I'm not asking you to comment on that, Lisa. I'm just speaking my mind here a little bit.
Through the chair, two things. One, we don't know really what would have happened because the application was denied. And I think the second point is, just to remind the council kind of where we are in the process because I know, I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues and we still haven't heard from the public yet on the public hearing portion. But we are in pending litigation and under the, on that old application. I don't know if I really want to talk and have staff talk too much about the old application. There, we have defenses to that case, I've said that before, there are defenses. Some of the defenses I've raised previously in, in prior public meetings. Some of the defenses are things that we would consider as part of a defense. So, I just, I think there's, there's definitely issues about the old application. They were in the record, they were in our findings. And I'd like the findings to speak for themselves at this point. And tonight, before you really is, that, that concept of, is this newly revised application as conditioned something that the council could support? For, for the idea of resolving the litigation, or at least having the potential to resolve the litigation? And I think the point that, and I don't want to speak for opposing counsel, but I think the point is, if you, if you do not want to go forward with the settlement proposal that's being presented, then the litigation will go forward, will be served by March 22nd, 2012. And we will have our defenses and we will litigate the case at some expense as I've spelled out in the, in the staff report. If we, if you approve the settlement agreement, what I think council is trying to say is, that we'll either, you'll either have the improved project that's before you tonight or if, if it's not technically feasible or doesn't get through NEPA or because of this reason or that reason, we will be in litigation. But we, we will be in litigation in 120 days. That's the way I see the timing of those two issues. So, it really does boil down to the settlement. I think the public might have some input into some of the terms of the settlement and the use permit. And that's where you have discretion tonight to try to, to see if there's anything that can, can be done there. Having said that, we have AT&amp;T and staff having negotiated this proposal or this product for you for the past couple of weeks. I don't know if they're, as I said before, I don't know if they'd be willing to entertain significant changes. There might be some changes that they could say they could agree to tonight. If it came up after the public hearing that was something important that required, that you required for you to make the findings of approval for the use permit and the settlement agreement, because remember, you have two items before you tonight. Settlement agreement's one part of it and that's sort of the technical timing details, how we're gonna implement this application. The use permit is the rules of the game. How are they gonna build this project if, if you decide to approve it? It's all the conditions to enable you to make the findings for the project. That's why it has the detail of the plans. The plans were only submitted, the final plans were only submitted on February 17th. So, it, the, but that was the result of some of that outreach and some of the interaction with staff, so.
So, just two, two other questions. The, when it says 300 feet from the project, that would be from all the corners of the property just like is done on other, like on residential projects, is that right?
Yes.
And then, what, what is our typical timing on, like, if we're gonna notice people for, in one of those cases, like for design review, right? We send out notices that there's, you know, your neighbor wants to add on to their house and there's gonna be a design review meeting and you're invited to come and speak. I know the applicants, you know, my customers are asked to send out letters, hold coffees, talk to their neighbors, try to, you know, get everything smoothed out before you get to the design review committee meeting. But, so what's the typical timeline on that for those meetings?
The public notice requirement is 10-day noticing.
Uh-huh.
In this situation, as they submitted on Friday, January 27th, we had drafted the notice on Tuesday after reviewing the plans and we received word from AT&amp;T that they were available on that February 7th to hold the meeting. So, it was mailed on Wednesday, February 1st. The reason for the short turnaround is we had initially scheduled the city council public hearing on February 13th. Following the site inspection, we decided to move that date mutually agreed to February 27th. So, that's one of the reasons for the very quick turnaround on the neighborhood meeting is we were trying to get that meeting in before they scheduled February 13th city council meeting.
And then, a follow-up question to the noticing, technically, anybody within 300 feet, but what about those who had shown interest in the project? And you had their email addresses and so forth, their names, because we've already met on this before and, you know, there are people who've shown interest in what's going on outside of, they might be close to the neighborhood, but they're not technically within that 300 feet. Were those people notified as well?
Technically, we mailed it to property owners. Technically, we mailed it to property owners within three hundred feet. And then anyone that spoke at the public hearing or sent in correspondence, we added them to the list.
You, okay, so you mailed to them, or emailed to them, or something?
It was mailed.
It was mailed, okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. Collins, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, just a follow-up to Mr. Growcott's question. Is that the type of thing that you would put on e-notify?
I don't, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with e-notify.
Typically, e-notify is for council meetings or commission meetings. You know, if we had gotten a request to e-notify something, we could have. But in this case, it was not e-notified.
Okay, thank you. Question hasn't come up, and I didn't see it anywhere in staff report. Does the city get any fees from AT&amp;T for the, for this, for the ongoing use of the property?
No, no fees.
Cal Water does.
Cal Water is the property owner, so they would have a lease agreement typically.
All right, Cal, so Cal Water gets the fees, okay. I got, well, we all got a, an email from one of the residents, and he actually called me last week. And he said, his question was, what's to prevent them, AT&amp;T, from coming back annually to put up more antennas? Is there, is there some sort of provision that limits how often that they can come back?
No.
Well, well, there would be indirectly under the law, because they'd still have to establish a gap in coverage in the area. And they have, if they have an antenna there already, I think it would be really hard to establish a gap in coverage.
Okay, all right.
But Mr. Rubens, that's not to point out that every time they upgrade their technology, there tends to be a gap in coverage because they need to upgrade the facility, correct?
That is possible, and, and that's why it's not in the settlement agreement, because those types of things do happen. But that would be the threshold issue of a gap in coverage. And I don't, I mean, I, I don't know enough about the technology to say whether or not they could use this existing pole to add different panels if there's new, new types of technology. But I understand this pole is, and AT&amp;T maybe can clarify this, but this pole will have the latest technology.
Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Griselli?
I have no questions to staff, thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. I have several questions here. One, just a, a process question. The emails that, one of which Ron was, pardon me, Councilmember Collins, was referring to. I noticed that we were given copies of these at the meeting, and the date stamp on them shows that one of the emails came in at nine thirty-five PM on Friday night. And I just was wondering if staff has a way going forward, when things like that happen over the weekend, that we can get this material before the meeting.
Thank you for that great question, Councilmember Olbert. We'd be happy to.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're always checking our email over the weekend, and we should have, and we apologize.
Okay, thank you. So, there is a process, basically. Okay, on to some more substantive things. In those emails, there was an, there was an interesting comment made that the, the arborist who was in attendance at the February seventh meeting, just quoting from the email here, not trying to assert that this is what he actually said, freely admitted that the concrete structure would likely hit the root structure of the large oak tree discussed at previous meetings. Damage to the roots would likely not kill the tree, there is a chance that it could. So, I'm just trying to get a little bit more sense of the arborist's position as to
We have our city arborist here.
Yeah, the individual that is quoted is the applicant's arborist, but we also have our arborist here. Would you like to have him respond?
Please.
He has better knowledge than I do on the line.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Ingles. Whenever you're inside the drip line of the tree, you're going to affect a portion of that root zone. You're going to have roots three hundred and sixty degrees around that tree. So, whenever you dig down within that area, you're going to affect a, a small portion of that root zone. If you were basically at the trunk of the tree and affecting twenty-five percent of the root zone, you would be affecting anything going past that point. Where they're digging out is basically at the edge of that root zone, and so you'd be affecting five to seven percent and maybe. So, in the grand scheme of things, you still have ninety-five percent of the root zone functioning normally. And so, yes, you'd be impacting roots. The likelihood of, of five percent of that root zone killing the tree, very significantly, is low.
Thank you. Another question I had, can you enlighten me a little bit about the noise situation? And in particular, the, I guess, the, the noise situation in aggregate at the site, meaning not just this particular applicant's project?
Correct. And actually, the applicant's noise consultant is here, is probably better respond than I could. But as indicated in the report, they took the ambient that was determined based on a previous report prepared by the city's noise consultant, took a noise reading of all the existing equipment at the site, and projected what the noise would be of the new equipment within the building, and put all that together and came up with, it's just under the city's noise limit for the nighttime and the daytime, and the nighttime is the more restrictive.
So...
Technically, how that happens, the applicant's noise consultant could respond.
I'll tell you what, let me ask the question, and then feel free to redirect it to whoever you feel is appropriate. So, there's two elements to that. So, basically, and part of it relies on a projection, because obviously the structure has not been built. So, what happens if, after it's been built? If it ends up that the projections were incorrect, and if, you know, if we're close to the threshold, it sounds like there's a reasonable chance reality could bite us in the derriere, and we could end up being over the threshold. What happens then?
They would need to work on some other sound attenuation, maybe that they could put some baffling inside. They may need to close the louvers and go to air conditioning. They would need to find a way to come under the city's noise limit.
And staff is comfortable that there are sufficient alternatives available for them to pursue in that area if it becomes necessary?
I believe so.
That we're not asking?
Expert would be better to answer that than I.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Olbert. My name is Bill Hammett, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California. What we designed for this facility was sufficient attenuation to bring the noise levels that are projected, which is a worst-case projection, down below the city's limits. And yes, there are additional options that could be implemented if it turns out that, under a worst ca, under an actuality, it does exceed highly unlikely. If it does, there are additional measures that could be applied. So, whenever we design something, we allow for the possibility that additional measures could be implemented if necessary.
Thank you. I, I have some more for you. I, I don't want you to feel neglected.
Getting my exercise tonight.
Yes. So, how frequently will the testing for the, remind me again, how frequently the testing for the noise threshold?
It's for the noise, as well as the radio frequency. And we're requiring that to be submitted every three years. And that's language in the conditional use permit, not reference in settlement agreement?
It's in the use permit, but remember, the use permit terms are incorporated in the settlement.
In the settlement agreement. I guess the question I have with that is, why wouldn't we, what would be the argument against doing something where, since obviously there's always some, worst-case estimates notwithstanding. I'm a big believer in Murphy's Law. And why would we not use a, at least initially, either a more frequent testing cycle, or at least test it sooner? You know, just to make sure that there's not a problem from the get-go? Because it almost, or maybe I'm missing something, it almost sounds to me like this thing could be constructed, there could be a problem, and technically, it's three years before we find out.
Yeah, we, we're requiring a post-insulation test. So, we need to see, after it's installed, up and running, what the noise is at that point, and then from there every three years.
And then the three-year clock starts?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe there's also a condition that if they make any changes to the equipment, they need to notify us, and would update that noise study as well.
And you, you, that would trigger another cycle?
That would trigger it, exactly.
Okay, that makes, that makes a lot more sense. We've talked, several people have talked tonight about the issue of the fundamental basis of all of this. Why we're here tonight is, has to do with gap in coverage. What role, if any, does staff have in evaluating gaps in coverage?
We review the maps they submit, and I believe on the original application, we also had an outside consultant take a look at that as well.
So...
We had a peer review conducted.
It, it's a, it's a review. So, would I be right in, in assuming then that, that effectively, while we haven't necessarily gone out and duplicated their, we haven't paid to duplicate the measurements that led to the, the conclusion there's a gap in coverage? We, we validated the data.
Correct.
We validated the data. It's not just a matter of looking at somebody else's data and saying, yes, your map is consistent with your data.
We didn't take independent readings.
Okay, but, but you had, you had a, a third party, in addition to staff, you also had an outside party look at it and evaluate it within the broader context of experience with these types of situations. Okay. Bear with me a second. Oh, yeah, I'm going to ask you this question, but again, it may be something that you want to refer to. I almost asked Mr. Rubens this, but I wasn't sure if it was technically a legal question or not. Another email that we were given, there's a phrase in here about how an assertion that other cities in the Bay Area have enacted more restrictive height limits on cell towers in residential neighborhoods. And I just was interested in staff's input on that.
The regulations definitely vary jurisdiction by jurisdiction, that's why we love planning. I wasn't involved in the review of the previous ordinance, I don't know, Greg, if you...
Well, this is, the, the height limit that we used was a height limit that was consistent with other antennas that are already installed in town, this is my recollection. It's also tied into the, the coverage issues in the Federal Telecommunications Act. If there is a gap in coverage, there's an issue as to what level of regulation we can have. The height, we, we're saying that the height of sixty-five feet or, or above would be so aesthetically displeasing that we're not going to allow them under any circumstances. We still have aesthetics review for heights lower than that. So, for instance, we could say that, that installation at, at fifty feet is inappropriate at that location. But we still, we start running afoul of the Telecommunications Act nondiscrimination provisions and the coverage issue that we talked about before.
Because I could imagine, if they didn't have constraints, hypothetically, municipalities could say, we have a three-foot height limit.
Yeah, that's exactly the point.
Okay.
Mr. Rubens, hasn't that essentially happened in one community down Southern California that was sued over their height limitations, because you essentially couldn't build any towers?
I think that, that's the idea, is, and, and the nondiscrimination portion is, if you have other cell towers that are of a certain height, it's harder for you to argue that...
If you let somebody else do it, why aren't you letting me do it?
That's right.
Yes, that equal protection clause is very important. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, did you have something to add? I saw your writing, so.
No.
Okay, Mr. Griselli, do you have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we will open the public hearing then, and we have a handful of public comments left. So, we're going to start with the applicants, Mr. O and Mr. Alpenic, and then we will go to regular public comment after that. I'll let the applicants take their time in speaking, but reg, come on up, Mr. O. But regular public comment will have to limit to two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I'm, I'm actually learning quite a bit today. One of the things, I was one of the four, by the way, that went to that February seventh meeting. I don't remember anyone talking about the color of the leaves, but we did ask, if there's a gap in coverage, how come you can't be more surgical? And, and instead, why is this hole being designed in this, in this site?
You need to speak us, you need to speak us.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, okay. And so, we did ask that question, we never got an answer. We got, we also asked questions like, this looks very hypothetical. Is there a place where you guys have done this kind of building before? So, we can stand next to it and see exactly how loud it is. And they said yes, and then we never heard back. And so, you know, there were some things that we did mention that just didn't get any coverage. But one of the things that I heard, again, today was that the first, if I, you know, I don't know if I heard it correctly or not, but it sounds like with the first application, that the NECA Phase One had started. And that application was dragged on through the process for a long time. And yet, when we discovered that it was an eight-inch, that's a five-inch structure, that there's a tree that was just completely missing from the thing, we never heard back from their analysis, that, you know, there seems to be something wrong, and that maybe we should take a look at it. So, that's something that just stuck in my mind. But what I wanted to do today is, I wanted to go through a couple files from the application that we saw, submitted about four days ago on Thursday, so. Okay. So, I'm going to open up the arborist's plans, I think that's just a pretty good place to start. And from the stuff that we've been hearing today, it looks like AT&amp;T then provides some information to people like the arborist, and, and so on. So, when I look at, and you know, correct me if I'm wrong, to... So, when we look at some of these detailed plans, we're assuming that, you know, AT&amp;T had provided these plans to them. So, the, the missing tree from the first application is tree number one. And it's, it's right here. Their plan shows that they're going to have this platform in the building placed over here, and that this bore is going to be, you know, I, I think I heard five to nine percent of the roots, but won't damage it. So, I wanted to take a look at this and just kind of see exactly where this tree is in their plan. So, what I did is I took existing buildings, this tank, and this room, this sprint room, I believe, and I just drew some lines extrapolating out from the edge. And what I found was something that looks like this. And tree number one is right over here. Okay. And then I went back to the nineteen ninety-eight plans, because to me, that, that, that was the one plan where, before AT&amp;T, before anyone, they just put down all the information that they knew as a fact. And in a lot of ways, it, it's a very unbiased representation of what's, what's out there. So, when I did that, I found that I got this, that the tree that they identified as tree number one was actually along this line. Not along this line and above, over here. Take a look here. I'm going to open up. Okay. So, we think that the location of this tree is, again, incorrect. And I wanted to show you a picture that we took. So, we, we, look, took a picture of this tree, and then we saw the building here. And this is the, the face in which the line was drawn. Here, you see the tank. But if the tree were here, in the location that they say it is, and I drew a blue perspective line through the tree, you wouldn't be able to see that face. I think it's more accurate to say that the nineteen ninety-eight plans were correct, that the tree is actually here. And that you could see the blue face, the, the, you could see the face of this tree and this tank. So, the information that was given to the arborist to do the report, to say that this tree was going to survive a five to nine foot, or nine percent trimming of the roots, is probably not valid. And since the arborist is here today, I'd like to know what they would say, knowing that the tree is now really, in fact, much closer to the bore hole, much closer to this construction site, than they were told of these plans. Take one last picture, I took one last picture then of this from far away, and I went along the line. So, you see, from the original plan, this is the exhaust fan, and you're, it's the bottom of it. You can see that I'm ninety degrees from that, perpendicular to that. This tree is mostly toward the construction site from that line. The tree is not here, it's actually here, much closer. So, if this is the kind of information that gets passed on to, you know, the other information, I would assume that it would have to be absolutely correct. But it seems like it makes a big, makes a, makes a change to what's out, really out there. So, I wanted to present that with, to you guys. Another thing that I did a couple weekends ago is, and normally I... Another thing that I did a couple weekends ago, and normally I don't do this, but I walked around the neighborhood and just, just knocked on doors and talked, talked to neighbors and said, you know, "How do you guys feel about, you know, the plans that are going on?" I was actually surprised that there was actually quite a bit of awareness about this. They weren't aware of, you know, the actual meetings and so forth, but they had heard about the original plan, they heard about the way that it was, you know, appealed, and the appeal was upheld. And, you know, they, they want to know what's going on. They have a sense of frustration that this is turning into a cell tower silver farm in their neighborhood. This is not what they signed on for when they bought the house. And, you know, so, there, I just want to let you guys know, there is quite a bit of sense of frustration in the neighborhood, and you may not see it with, you know, four people showing up to meetings and things like that, but there, there really is. So, okay?
Thank you, Mr. O. Next up, we have Mr. Alpalenik, who's also one of the opponents, and then we'll start our regular public comment.
I don't know if I'll need some help with the thumb drive here or not. Oh, okay. Just a couple things before I start, and I won't try to take too long. I listened to some things that were talked about here that I think were less than truthful, and has nothing to do with really where the tree is, where the tree isn't. It's not where they say it is. And I can pull up the arborist, their, AT&amp;T's arborist report. There's a picture that shows the tree right in the middle of the construction zone. But before I even get to any of that, I know, Mr. Mayor, you were CC'd on some emails that went back and forth, August and September. I, I've, I've heard AT&amp;T talk about how they tried to engage the community, and I think you know firsthand that their effort was less than sincere. I just, if they would have come, and, and I stated this at the Planning Commission meeting, and I turned around to Fred Rios and the gentleman that's right there, and I, I thought it was going to go back to planning, and I said, "This would be great. We'll, we'll work with you, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll fix all these problems that we brought up during the Planning Commission meeting." And we, we talked about the coverage, too, and people were there that had AT&amp;T phones, and they said, "We get three and four bars." None of that really happened, and here we are. A lot of paper's been processed, a lot of time's been wasted, community's yours, you've got more important things to do. There was a lot of discussion about, gee, if the original plan went through and we just rolled over in the neighborhood and we didn't pay attention to what was going on in our own neighborhood, that, you know, they would, they would have found out eventually they couldn't put this structure up without tearing it down. If you look at the telecommunications ordinance and, that we have in place, it allows some protection for the citizens. And when you tear down a grandfathered structure, it asks that you improve it. So, the likelihood of them proceeding is very slim, especially since the conditional use permit would have been signed and issued, I think, in, Mr. Rubens, I think you can help me, wake up. I think clause, clause number one or something, and there's something, in the conditional use permit says something like, if the conditional use permit changes significantly, it's void. So, I don't really understand the whole lawsuit with AT&amp;T and the city. I just don't. I want to, I want to pull up a couple of, I don't know if I can pull the arborist thing, report up, maybe one of the study staff could do that for me. But I do want to show, in the public record, you've got some photo simulations. These are just out of your public record. Got existing proposed. The proposed tower, you can see their line right there, and they, and they obviously clearly state that it's not going to be visible beyond the tree line. The Sprint Tower, very top of the tower is right there. We know from records and fact that that tower is 22 feet tall. The footing right here is exactly almost even, six inches maybe in, in grade depth. So, I can't understand how an additional 18 feet is not going to show right there. And it's even with the Sprint Tower. Doesn't make sense. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't compute at all. If you go to the next slide, which is, again, their slide, you got proposed, here we have the Sprint Tower. It's a straight-on shot. That's 22 feet. That's 40 feet. How's that not going to show? I think the whole photo simulation is, is incorrect.
Excuse me, could you, could you indicate again which one's the Sprint Tower?
This is one of the Sprint, this is one of the Sprint structures right there that they were going to build on.
Okay.
And that's 22 feet.
Thank you.
And that's their photo simulation, that's 40 feet. I don't know who drew these pictures up, but I hope they have errors and omissions insurance. I really do. I'll, I'll try to bring up the other public document, and then I have just a brief statement. At least, no. Well, here's an old picture. There's the tree over there, there's a Sprint shack. You can see its way to the left of the tank tower. It's right in the middle of the building's construction area. Someone from staff, you could probably ask them to bring up the arborist, AT&amp;T's arborist pictures, and they've got a clean shot from the other side from Cal Water, showing the tree right there, right in the middle of the construction. I'm not going to waste the council's time trying to dig around for it. I, I just want to digress for a moment and, and share my frustration with this, with this community meeting, and, and how we were supposed to be outreach, too. I didn't get my notice until Friday. And then I was insulted on Saturday, finding out that I get a different, another notice from planning, that the meeting, AT&amp;T gets an extension of two weeks. I had to cancel a business trip in order to make the meeting. Contrary to what you've heard here, I asked questions and people walked away from me. Mr. Griselli, you were knowledgeable enough to say, "Hey, you know, what about a pine tree, monopine, microcell, DCS it's called, distributed cell service?" I asked about that, person turned around, walked away from me. Walked away from me, just didn't, didn't want to hear it. Not, not, not a word. I went down to City Hall this last Thursday, the 23rd, inspected both the AT&amp;T complete original application and settlement application packages, and I found serious discrepancies, like the one I just presented here. Simulation pictures, you could pull up their own arborist shots, the trees right in the middle of construction. But the most disturbing and sinister thing that struck me was the lack of public record correspondence, because this process has been going on for nine months. So, I want to leave you with, Mr. Mayor and City Council, with an important question. Why are all the voters, taxpayers, and residents in San Carlos, of which I'm one, being treated differently by public employees, AT&amp;T, and their vendors? There isn't, I've heard all this discussion about how much everybody has talked to city staff, and everybody's working with everybody else, and in both packages, I don't see one email, I don't see one note, I see nothing. Not quite right. So, I appreciate the extra time, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alpalenik.
Have the arborist pull up that picture, you'll be able to get...
We'll get to that. Ms. Nichols, I see you here in public comment, Ms. Nichols. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I see you here in public comment. You don't want to speak again, do you? Okay. Glenn Galenu, followed up by Debbie, I imagine it's Debbie Bocci Galuppi, and then the gentleman sitting next to Mr. O, you didn't write your name down, but you're going to be third in, in line. So, we're going to give everyone two minutes, and feel free to talk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First off, I'd like to thank you for your deliberateness on this issue. I think it's very important. Earlier this evening, I heard the representative from AT&amp;T mention that the outreach effort was sent out within 300 feet and everybody, and to everybody that made public comment. I know I made public comment at one of the previous meetings, and I, I was never noticed. I think, as a council, we're setting a bad precedent by trying to, capitulation is not the right word, but anytime somebody threatens to sue us, that we're going to fall back and, and on the, on the fears that we may have to expend some money to defend the law, ourselves against that suit. I think also that this issue, and I think the question that needs to be asked of AT&amp;T, is are there other ways to mitigate their coverage area? Mike, I've got over 35 years in the RF wireless radio communications industry, know, feel I know a fair amount about it, and I think that there's alternative measures that can be taken to mitigate their coverage gap. It's a matter of economics for them, but it's also a matter of economics for the property owners in the surrounding areas. And I think that AT&amp;T is, I guess, more well-suited to bear the brunt of those economics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Glenn. Debbie Bocci Galuppi, followed by the gentleman next to Mr. O.
So, I'm really impressed tonight. I feel like, for the first time in a long time, you guys really understand our frustration. Our lifestyles will change, mine will change with this, whatever they end up putting in, because my backyard is right beyond that tree. So, anyway, it's an interesting view from the back of the room. When Rubens, Attorney Rubens mentioned the March 22 litigation, I saw, I think, a group of attorneys saying, "Yep, we will pursue litigation." That was quite interesting to see. In the beginning, we heard nothing but what I would say is bullying. We were told that this is about a discrimination that, that AT&amp;T should be able to be up there because of this discrimination law, and I feel we, citizens, are being discriminated against. There are plenty of other hills, there's plenty of other spaces, there's plenty of other options, and I feel that we're being discriminated against. We heard things like, "We need to build this project." We had many meetings with staff. We've had significant ti, significant time has been spent by AT&amp;T and by staff and by consultants. Our goal is to get our project built. It's not, then I heard, "We're off to the races. We're going through with this. It's not in our control." And my question is, where do the residents have control? We have had no control. The other thing that I, I find very interesting is, why would they lie? NEPA is not what they told you, and I know this because of, we're going back to the Siskiyou County issues. I know that because I've been in three years' worth of NEPA issues. NEPA is a federal regulation process that outline, it's, it's federal regs that outline the process for environmental review and coordination. It doesn't take 60 to 90 days, it could take forever for NEPA to figure out, what do we need to do an environmental report? Do we need to do a study? SEQA, SEQA has to be done on this thing, and I've never seen any report on SEQA. And SEQA, under SEQA, there's three things. One, there's no impact, so the project can go through. Two, mitigate the project, or mitigate the impact, so there is no report required. And three, that there is an environmental report due. They are going to breach...
Ms. Bocci Galuppi, we're going to need you to wrap up.
Okay, they're going to drill into the ground, you saw the pictures, and there absolutely needs to be a SEQA. And I think that the lawsuit should go back, if they're going to push this through, I think you guys have opportunity to push back and say, "You've lied on your contracts, you've lied about the public input that you say is out there." And, and anyway, I just want you to get, to remember, my bedroom is going to look straight at that tree. And we didn't even look at the shadows that are going to be over my garden with this tree that high. So, there's a lot of, environmentally, there's a lot of issues, aesthetically, there's a lot of issues, and I have AT&amp;T, I get dropped, I also have Sprint, I get dropped as well.
Thank you. Gentleman in the green, if you could give us your name when you come up and speak, followed by Brian Randall, and then Sandra, I believe it was Schultz.
Good evening, council members and City Mayor. My name is Tom Scherer. I live on Pepper Lane with my wife and three children, within easy view of the proposed construction project. We first heard about the proposed construction project on Sunday night, February 26th, from a neighbor who was walking around and asking us if we had heard about an AT&amp;T proposal to add more radio towers to our hilltop. We received no contact from AT&amp;T outreach or from the city staff concerning this project prior to being contacted by a concerned neighbor. I'm a concerned private citizen who will be impacted by your decision with many unanswered questions. One of those is, why, with the current design submitted on February 17th, but outreach was conducted on February 7th? Why was the present proposal not available at the time of community outreach? And why was there no review of the current proposal or design by the community? Is this another AT&amp;T bait and switch? I also don't understand why AT&amp;T would put up a simulation photograph without a scale to indicate the true scale of the proposed project they're showing you in the picture. There's no reference point of actual height in, in any of the photographs. So, I, I question whether that simulation is actually accurate at all. I also have safety concerns. As we know, that hilltop has already quite a few radio antennas, and I'm not really convinced that additional radiation, microwave radiation on a crowded residential hilltop is going to actually be safe. Furthermore, the hilltop is a high wind zone with both constant wind as well as high shear gusts during storms, and I don't, haven't seen any evidence of consideration of the structural integrity or adequate structural design to withstand those kinds of stresses. In my opinion, the area does not suffer from undue or necessarily poor cellphone signal. I have reception most of the time, like anywhere else, the signal occasionally gets dropped, but I don't see that as being especially worse than other places where I work or live. Notably, Palo Alto and South San Francisco have worse cellphone reception.
We're going to need you to start wrapping up, Mr. Scherer.
Yes, I just have a few more comments or concerns. So, I'm also not sure that, whether there is a, which region is going to benefit from this increased coverage, and whether there's a better non-residential or less impactful location to benefit that particular region. I also really wonder, is there a demonstrated gap in the coverage? That's not clear to me. And I question whether or not AT&amp;T does or doesn't already have equipment up on that hill. It sounds to me like they do. And finally, I, I don't understand the legal basis for legitimacy against, of a corporate lawsuit against the City of San Carlos after you, in your wisdom and decision, turned their initial application down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scherer. Brian Randall, followed by Sandra Schultz.
Brian Randall, San Carlos, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen. This is a long story, and I want to say there was a, things almost came to a halt until Brad Lewis suggested one of these trees, and that took hold. And the trees is, is supposed to be going in. But the citizens on the hill need to see the location and height of the proposed stealth tree. So, erect a wooden markle pole, same height as the tree, colored orange on top. This is done on building sites all the time. Councilman Growcott and I asked for this long ago. This doesn't address all the other problems. Rather no antennas at all were on that lovely hill. But if we have to accept, better they're disguised as trees. But if we have to accept, better they're disguised as trees. When this originally came up, I wondered why they didn't go ahead with the original location, which is at the back of the hill and doesn't trouble too many people. Well, that's not right, it does trouble some people. But if they had gone up with those and disguised those as trees, that would have been far easier than what they're doing now. But do try and get a pole, one wooden pole up there, which shows the location and the height of that tree. I can't address all the other problems, it's getting much too complex, and it's getting difficult for the council to know what's happened in the past, but I'm sure you'll find out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thanks for hearing us tonight. My first comment is, we're outside that 25 to 300-foot zone, and we have not been contacted. We have heard from neighbors who are very concerned, have walked around our neighborhood to say, this is what's happening. I guess we could do a lot of research and try to figure out where these public information and try to understand this complex deal. All I can say tonight is you guys are really well-informed, and we thank you for representing us. Couple things, everybody's handled it really well. Have any long-term impact studies benchmarks been given out to the community? I think my concern is, as a property owner, the quality of life with multiple towers building, growing in our neighborhood, and I know like, the power lines that came up years later, people weren't selling their houses because of the cancer research that was done and the impact on children. So I have a great, grave concern on the safety and the resale of our home later down the line, how it's going to impact our health 10 years from now, and how many more Sprint towers are going to go up, and how big this little zone's going to be. We live on a hill that has a valley. I hear a dog barking, I think it's my neighbor. It's five blocks away. These noises that happen on that hill aren't right where Debbie lives. We can see the towers, we can hear the towers. At 3:00 in the morning, we hear the trucks go in to repair the towers. The noise doesn't just happen in the little circumference of this zone. It impacts us all through the neighborhood, all through the hill. No one even knows this project is going on if you don't live on Shelford or Northam or Lynnhurst. But everybody's impacted, and I think that the outrage was nonexistent. I wasn't here for the 7th, I've been here to two meetings prior, earlier in this process. We weren't here in the 7th because we got one letter, it said it's four days from now, and we weren't going to change our life for that meeting. AT&amp;T has not reached out to this community. It's unheard of, that we have no packets of information, we are ill-informed. How are decisions being made? The solution when the new tower had to be built, was their solution was to create some mock tree. When we went from adding on to a mock tree, that was their only solution. At that point, when that huge shift was made, why weren't they looking at other locations to add on or create this new stealth tree? This impacts a lot of people, their homes, their quality of life, the children in our neighborhood. I think this, this needs to go out to more people who are impacted on that hill. And the noise is not just local, it reaches out further in this community. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I don't see any other public comments left, so we're going to get started. I need someone to close the public.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
For a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? No, okay, we'll move on to discussion. Does anyone have any questions based on what we've heard from public comment for staff, AT&amp;T, or, well, Mr. Rubens' staff, so, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a number of questions here, and some of them are probably due to my ignorance of some of these matters, but based on some of the comments that were made, the issues related to the uncertainty of the location of the tree, one of the trees that people are concerned about being damaged from this project. Question I have is, is it possible to craft the conditional use permit in such a way that it isn't based on the particular, the presumed location of the tree, but it just sort of says, stay away from the tree with your boring activity?
It is, and there is consideration in the use permit for the location and the construction to be supervised by the arborist. So there is some protection during construction and after construction.
In simple-minded terms, to potentially route the hole that's being drilled in a way that limits the damage to the tree.
Yeah, right, and, well, what's being built, and staff can correct me on this, what's being built in the root zone of the tree is the equipment, not the antenna. I mean, the antenna's in a different tree than the one that you saw in the pictures. And that particular shed is, doesn't have a lot of grading, from my understanding, and perhaps staff can, can comment on that part of it. The equipment shed and...
Right, at that, at that location, it's more fill, less grading, they're grading on the other end, slopes down. But I was also consulting with the city's arborist. Yes, we could put something objective in there, that it be located outside of 10 feet from the trunk, or outside the drip line. Yes, we could put something in there. And I just wanted to clarify that, when we did do the site inspection, we were looking at where it was going to line up and the location of the tree to try to evaluate that in addition to the plans. But yes, you could add objective.
So in other words, this is one of my follow-up questions. So you were looking at, you went up there and looked at where the tree actually was, not, not what the plan said it was?
Correct. We looked at where the tree actually is, we walked the site. Now, the location of the building wasn't staked out at that time.
Right.
But we took it off some cues, and so that's where the arborist did a visual assessment as well.
Okay. My next question has to do with, one of the speakers talked about a potential for a SEQA requirement, and I just wanted to get a little insight into that.
Well, the city's position has been, for this and all other cell antennas, that it's categorically exempt. And so that's the designation, that this antenna and the structure that's being built along with it.
Is there a brief explanation as to why that conclusion was reached?
Well, there's SEQA regulations and guidelines, and this qualified for the guidelines for small structures, and staff can clarify, I think that's the exemption that it's under.
And then there was, one of the, one of the speakers also raised a question, I guess presumably had gone down and looked at the file on, the public file on this situation, and had made some comments as to being confused as to why there didn't seem to be certain documentation in there, so I was just wondering if staff could comment on that.
Certainly. The individual asked to see the public file, and in the public file was all the submittal information. As I'm actively working on the application, I hadn't printed out every email, so if there was a public records request, I would absolutely provide all email correspondence. They just weren't in the file at that time.
Oh, I see, so in my simple-minded terms, the public file is not sort of kept up-to-date on a daily basis, a real-time basis, as emails come in and get printed?
Correct, I had saved all the emails to a folder, and upon request, I would absolutely provide all those documents.
Okay. I wonder whether or not, just as sort of a process question, whether or not that, that approach could be made clear to people when they come down and look at the files so that they would know to ask, to see if there are emails. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Grisilli, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. Collins?
None at this time.
Mr. Grocott?
The only thing I'm wondering here is, you know, we had information on previous plans, it was inaccurate. There is a whole tree missing. I'm just curious why there wasn't a requirement on this set of plans to include a site survey? It's not uncommon, and again, and, you know, I, in my industry, the work I'm involved in, you get involved with a topographical challenged site with a lot of trees and so forth, and when you're asked to save trees and determine drip lines and put screens around the base of these trees under the drip line to make sure nothing happens during construction, I'm just a little surprised, and I wonder if staff might have some comment as to why, or, I guess, put another way, is there a way we can require that, before things go further with this, that there be a site survey, and let's figure out where these trees are based on, you know, a surveyor's going up there? Because, you know, I can understand, this guy's out there eyeballing things, staff is doing the same thing. That's why you have surveyors, provide that kind of information to this sort of fellow, so he knows exactly where the tree is.
Well, the, the, I, well, I guess I'm just trying to understand your question. Are you saying, is that something that you would want to see before approving the use permit, a site survey, or you want a condition of approval that talks about verifying the location of the tree?
I'm talking about doing it before we approve these, because, again, we haven't been able to trust things we've seen before, there's been mistakes, and the best way to make sure that there aren't any mistakes is not to rely on AT&amp;T and their, you know, whoever drew these plans for them, or, you know, like I say, I think it's too much to ask our staff to do it, or this arborist, you know, I hold no, no fault with, with this gentleman, he did what he could with the information he had. But obviously, there are questions, and again, there were mistakes before, so can we just say we want to see a site survey before we move further with this?
I mean, it's something that you could ask for, I mean, in the short answer to your question, it's something you can ask for, whether or not it's something that will prevent the settlement from being implemented is something AT&amp;T would have to, you'd have to ask them, whether that would be something they would make it so they would not be willing to sign the settlement agreement.
And Mr. Grocott, this is your opportunity to ask them.
Well, AT&amp;T, what do you think?
I have a feeling what the answer's going to be.
Councilmember Grocott, AT&amp;T's position is that they are prepared to talk with the city regarding this, but we will have to move forward with the litigation simultaneously.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Grocott?
No, that was it, just on the lot survey.
Okay, so we will start, I have no questions, so we'll start with discussion. Who would like to start? We have a couple things to consider tonight. We have a conditional use permit, and our architecture review permitted a new monopine cellular antenna, we can add issues. I think the first thing we have to do, before we get into the discussion about whether or not to add conditions to the CUP, is to discuss whether or not we even want to go forward with the conditional use permit, so we can discuss that overall topic first. So who would like to start?
May I ask a clarifying question? So you want us to talk about the conditional use permit separate from the settlement?
Yeah, discuss whether or not we want to settle and move forward with the CUP first, and then if we decide that that's the direction we want to go, we can nail down into the conditional use permit.
Oh, I see, so, for example, hypothetically, if somebody, if one of us was unwilling to move, if enough of us were unwilling to move forward with the settlement...
We wouldn't talk about the conditional use permit.
It wouldn't be a point.
Yeah, that'd be no point.
I understand, thank you.
Make this as efficiently as possible. So who would like to start?
I'll start.
Mr. Grisilli?
You know, this, AT&amp;T's in an unenviable position sitting there because they're going to get nothing but slammed, even though we all have cellphones in our pockets, and we all go, how come I got dropped? But yet, we spin it around, and you come before us, and we go, not here, over there. Not here, over there. But we want our cellphone coverage. So you're in an unenviable spot, and you all know it, and if you don't, you shouldn't be sitting here or speaking to us, because you know you're going to get slammed. Frustration is rampant. If we had our druthers, I think at least this council member wouldn't vote for this. But I'm also practical and pragmatic. Gentleman mentioned about capitulating in a lawsuit. I always look at the whole picture and get all the information that I can, and if someone wants to sue me, I look and see what my defenses are and what our chances are of winning. And in this situation, I don't know that there's a lawsuit that's been lost by the telecom companies. Oh, speaking of which, bells, bells are ringing. Our chances of winning this in federal court, I believe personally, with having talked to council and just from what I know, are slim and none. But it will, certainly will delay it, there's no question we'll delay it, six months, eight months, a year, who knows? But eventually, we'll lose, we'll have to spend $100,000, $200,000, whatever it is, of the city's money to defend a suit that is loseable, that we're going to lose. And the pole or something will go up there. I think we, we made a valid, a valid effort at the first meeting to say, it wasn't a very good job, and I think in private, if you asked each of the people sitting in the first and second row that work for the company, you'd probably say, this wasn't maybe our finest moment in putting together what you put together with details, because it certainly lacked, as Mr. Grocott's brought up a number of times, and he's more technical on the construction than I am. But all that being said, we have to make decisions up here for the good of the entire community. And sometimes, that means that people are affected directly, in other, in a negative way, and then people are directed, are directly affected in a positive way. I think we have a better plan than we had when we started. We, we can't speak, as one of the speakers spoke, we can't speak to the safety issue, it's not allowed under the Federal Communications Act. The only thing we can only speak to is the aesthetics, for all intents and purposes. I'm simplifying it. I'm going to be voting for this tonight, reluctantly, but I'm going to be voting for it, and I would encourage my fellow council members to, to realize that, again, as was mentioned by Ms. Nichols just now, we can throw in a whole bunch of stuff, they're going to sue us, and as soon as that thing starts, the meter starts. And I realize, we're not all doing this for money, we can, we can stand and be Don Quixote all we want, and that's great, and if we want to spend the money, it's up to five of us to do it. But this council member tries to get all the information together and realize that we, we did a good job, I think, of trying to get it in better project, and this is what we're going to get, and it's terrible to say this is all we can get, but I think at this point in time, with the time ticking, I think we can make a good point, and we still have safety issues, or, not safety issues, but safeguards in the, in the agreement, that if some things, as the noise was brought up, or the tree or other things, that we have a possibility to resolve those in a positive way with the company. So, those are my comments.
Mr. Grisilli, Mr. Olbert?
Picking on me again? Just kidding. No, I, no, no, no.
Sometimes I start on my right, sometimes I start on my left.
You were correct in divining, I was, I was going to stick my hand up. My colleague, Councilman Grisilli, I think, makes a number of very good points, and in fact, I agree with, with almost all of them. I came to this meeting tonight expecting regretfully to support the settlement. But I will be perfectly blunt and say that, that one clause in the proposed agreement, which I spent so much time digging into, really sticks in my craw. It really sticks in my craw. And I haven't yet decided how I will, I will ultimately cast my, cast my ballot here, but I want to speak a little bit to AT&amp;T. Whether it was intended to look this way or not, I will tell you that from this one person's perspective, non-technical, well, I'm reasonably technical, but not necessarily in cellphone towers. I don't feel that the initial plan that was put forward was your best work. I don't feel that the response to it was the best work. I can appreciate, from having worked in business myself, that, that most businesses don't have the luxury of time to be able to, you know, do an A-plus job on every single thing that comes before them. But I think in this case in particular, there were quite a few places where you fell down on the job, and I really hope going forward, that whatever happens tonight here, that you look carefully into your business processes and figure out how to improve them. Because quite frankly, you see some of the, some of the sensitivities being voiced and the questions being raised, you know, that boil down to, gee, information we've been provided on multiple occasions turned out to be factually incorrect. There's only a certain number of times that that can happen bef- There's only a certain number of times that that can happen before people basically, anybody will look at a messenger and say, I can't trust anything that person says, even though I know they're technically astute. And that's unfortunate, there's an irony here in that. I think Councilman Grisilli is absolutely correct to say that we all value our cellphones, we all value our connections. I just wish, quite frankly, that the speed and focus and expedited deployment of resources to sue the city of San Carlos had been demonstrated to move some of these alternative plans forward, and to move, to bring forward initially a better plan. It seems like, and again, I'm sure this is not what it is, I'm just telling you what it looks like from the outside, it seems like AT&amp;T is geared and ready and able to sue people at the drop of a hat, sue municipalities at the drop of a hat, whenever something goes wrong. But they're not ready or able to deploy the resources to keep things from going wrong in the first place, in terms of the quality of the plans and submissions, in terms of the outreach plans, in terms of all that kind of stuff. And that's a disappointment to me. So I'm still wrestling with how I'm going, but that one clause in particular, I will tell you quite flat out, if we could strike that clause from the settlement, proposed settlement agreement tonight, I would go back to where I was saying, I would reluctantly support it. I don't like all the impacts it's having on the community. I strongly urge the community members to get involved with the federal legislative process to try and force some change in that, because that's where this constraints are coming down from. But that one clause in particular just really sticks for me.
Mr. Olbert, Mr. Collins?
Well, I've sued AT&amp;T before. My partner and I did a few years ago over Yellow Pages ad, and we lost. We fought it, and we fought it, and we fought it, and we lost. So I know what it's like. And one of the things I was taught as I was growing up was, never file a lawsuit against anybody, and never sue anybody if you can. But that doesn't mean I'm not ready for a fight. But you also have to pick your battles, and unfortunately, in this case, I just feel like I have a gun to my head. It's like, what weapon do I want used on me? And I feel like I've got a decision to make before, or between, two really undesirable alternatives. Representatives of AT&amp;T, my colleagues have said it very well, I wish you'd done a better job of working with the citizens. Because, see, after tonight, you guys get to leave, we have to live with them, we have to see them on Laurel Street. And I agree with Mr. Grisilli, yes, I am gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor, but I'm not gonna feel very good about it. I just wish that you step up and work with us, and work with the people in this town, and particularly, obviously, the neighbors, and make sure that the final project is something that has the least impact on people. Because, you know, we could sue, but, or we could take the lawsuit and fight it, but in the end, I agree with Mr. Grisilli, we end up losing, and we end up spending a lot of money that we don't have. And I don't know what else to say, other than it's, I want to get the best deal that we can get. And I also just feel that we don't really have a lot of, a lot of good options here. So, again, I just say once again, you're a big company, you have lots of money, you have lots of resources, spend some of it, and give us the best possible project that you can. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
You know, over on the rail corridor, there's some empty land. And the Joint Powers Board is planning on building over there, we all know that. They're an agency, just like we are. They're an agency like a school district. Mark knows, a school district can build a 75-foot-tall school building if they like, they don't have to check in with us. And in the same way, the Joint Powers Board could build 75-foot-tall residential towers on their property, and not come and ask us about anything on that. That's my understanding, because they're a separate agency. Well, whether it's true or not, my point is this, Mr. Rubens, I may be wrong on that, but that's, was my understanding, is that they do not have to engage us. But regardless of whether they do or not, they have. And they've tried very hard to engage our community, that's my point. AT&amp;T, on the other hand, thinks that having one meeting where they send out notices seven days in advance, and have four people show up, and they don't ask themselves, gee, why did only four people show up? Maybe we should do this again. Maybe we should try some other outreach. Getting people to come to meetings, I know, I go to a lot of meetings. Sometimes you have to do, go to meeting.com on the phone, or whatever, you know, there's other ways people meet. And then I also hear from some of our constituents that they ask questions at the meeting, they were told, we'll follow up with you, and they got no follow-up. That's not public engagement. Even when I suggested here tonight, why don't we do a survey and really figure out where these trees are located? I'm told, go ahead, we'll sue you. We're gonna open up the lawsuit, you can go ahead and do that, and we'll comply with it, and we'll engage the consultant, but in the meantime, we're gonna open up the lawsuit. That's what I heard. Maybe you want to step to the podium and deny that, but that's what I heard. So what I've got here is a gun to my head, that I don't like having to my head. We asked at that council meeting, when we rejected the project, what was our request of AT&amp;T? Please, we're a community, if you look at our processes with like residential design, and neighbors building, you know, second-story homes on original homes that were built in 1940s, and are these little tiny bungalows, you know, we deal with that all the time as a community. And our, the way we work with our community is notify your neighbors, invite them over for coffee, show them your plans, work with them, talk to them about what they don't like, so that before you get to the Design Review Committee hearing, you got all this stuff worked out. And you know what, it's a really good process. I don't think, we hardly ever have appeals, or neighbors up in arms too much about what the other neighbor's doing. People work with each other, that's San Carlos, that's the community. That's why, on this plaque back here, it's called the City of Good Living. We've developed that over the years. But what we get from AT&amp;T is, screw you, we're gonna see you in court unless you do it our way. Well, this council member would be happy to see you in court.
Okay, well, I'm gonna agree with a lot of the comments that were said here tonight, so I'm not gonna try to reiterate too much. But we are kind of in a, stuck between a rock and a hard place. AT&amp;T's threat is not to sue us over the monopine, it's to sue us over the original application. And the original application is a dirt-pore tower that absolutely no one wants, this council didn't want either. But I agree with Mr. Grisilli, though, I don't think we have a great chance of winning that lawsuit, because there is a gap in coverage. It's been shown, it's been testified by members of the public. I would advise you not to do that next time, but there is a gap in coverage, and I know that because I grew up on that hill. My family moved there 29 years ago, and I know how shoddy the cellphone coverage is. And I know that Mr. O went door-to-door this last weekend, because I got phone calls from parents of friends and people who I grew up with in that neighborhood asking me about this. And there was a handful, not a lot, most of the phone calls I got were just questions, like, what's going on, you know, why don't we know about this? But a couple of them said, put the tower in, I don't have cellphone coverage. And that's, growing up in this town, I know how shoddy, especially AT&amp;T, that's why I have Verizon, how shoddy the service is. But, you know, with that being said, we are stuck between a rock and a hard place. The monopine, I believe, is better than the original application. It's a compromise, it's not a great compromise, I don't think anyone wins here. There is not many businesses in this world that exist where you have to take their business or they'll sue you. I would love that in my business, we'd all be filthy rich. But AT&amp;T has that ability, where if we don't take their business, they'll sue us. And it's a shame, because there's, you could act the way you act now, or you could do the right thing and reach out to the community, and you just choose to act as bullies. And that's not appropriate, and it's not fair, but that's your prerogative. I just wish you guys would show corporate citizenship and really engage the community, and reach out to people. This is a neighborhood that feels neglected, and it's easy, you could have done simple things. And when people say they were only noticed a week before, I have to correct them, it wasn't AT&amp;T who noticed them, we did. AT&amp;T did nothing. They just said, we can meet this date, and that's it. Everything else was on the responsibility of the city, so they don't even get credit for that. They just showed up on one day, and that was it, and you thought that's enough, and that's not enough in this community. And I really wish I could vote, like Mr. Grokot said, to go to court, but I believe we'll spend $100,000, and we're gonna get something worse than the monopine, we're gonna get the original application. And it's just an awful thing to sit up here, and that's why I can't stand this Communications Act, because the federal government says, you have no control, but you have to hear the issue. And that's the most awful thing to do, to sit up here, to know that there's not a lot that we can do. And it's a shame, and I would advise, just like Mr. Olbert said, to reach out, reach out to Congresswoman, tell her this isn't okay, tell her the experience you've had today, and tell her that a lot of these council members up here totally agree with you. But we have to look out for what's in the best interest of the city, and I think this is a losing lawsuit for us. So I'll be voting in favor of putting together a conditional use permit, I would like to see greater conditions, of course. So I think we're gonna have to talk about that as a council, but from what I'm gathering, there's three council members, Mr. Olbert was in the middle at this point, and Mr. Grokot's in favor of going to court. So, Mr. Olbert, unless you want to chime in, we're gonna move forward, yeah?
Yeah, I just wanted to make two other brief comments, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One is, your comment about, it would be great, you know, a lot of businesses would love the opportunity to enforce their customer service on people. That just reminded me of something, I forget who said it years ago, but it was some businessperson who said, it's generally not a good idea to sue your customers. It's something you avoid at great cost. And I guess I would remind the telecommunications companies, the worm always turns. It may take a while, but it always turns. The other comment I wanted to make is, I'm not normally indecisive, I'm still kind of wrestling with how I'm going to go. If, whatever I decide to do, I just want my fellows to understand, I very much appreciate all the arguments and discussions here. I think people can have different opinions on how to do this, and if I do decide to vote against this, it is not a result of wanting to tilt at windmills, it's based on a cold-hearted analysis, which I may differ with some people about, so I just wanted to say that.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Herr.
I just want to add, when I look at this project, the monopine, I agree with you, it's a much better project than what was brought to us before. I really don't have much issue with it, they've done a great job in terms of putting a roof on the building, and they've given us a monopine that's, you know, hides what's going on there and so forth. I know people have to suffer through construction, and that's gonna be difficult, you know, I don't know how long the construction is gonna take. Personally, you guys, not a bad project. Process-wise, lousy. And that's the issue I have. And I also have an issue with, I'm just trying to add one little thing, I would like to add my one little thing about a survey into the conditional use permit, but I'm told, if I do that, you're gonna start the legal process, and so our money clock starts ticking. And I don't like that. That's not the answer I wanted. I would be willing to actually go along with where my council's headed, which is to vote in favor of the project, but I'd like to put in this one condition of a survey, and I'm hearing from AT&amp;T, no, you can't put that in there, if you do, your clock, you know, money's gonna start flowing out of your wallet, your city wallet. Do I have something misunderstood here, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to clarify the point that was made earlier. I was under the impression that you said you didn't want it to be put in as a condition, that you wanted it to be done before you voted on the conditions.
Well, I would, that's true, but the way I understand it is, even if I put it in here...
Well, we can, let's ask...
I guess we could ask.
I think that's a different question for AT&amp;T.
We could have Ms. Nichols. We wanted to know what your responses to Mr. Grokot about asking if this could be part of the conditional use permit, a site survey? Yeah, we're really gonna need you to speak into my mic.
We would accept that as a condition.
You would accept it, very good.
Okay. So then, in that case, would you be in favor of moving forward the conditional use permit, Mr. Grokot?
We can put, I would like to see that added to item 10.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Yeah, I'm still struggling also with what Mr. Olbert is struggling with, I just don't understand that situation here.
And so, and before we get to that, Mr. Olbert, what I think we should do now, since we do have a majority of the council who is going to vote in favor of conditional use permit, let's focus on the conditional use permit, and if Mr. Grokot and Mr. Olbert feel at the end that they still need to vote no, I don't think there's gonna be any hard feelings about that. But we would like your input on the conditional use permit, and then you guys can choose whether or not to vote yes or no, based on how you feel at that time.
What I wanted to ask, actually, which I believe would be, at least one of them would be part of the conditional use permit, I would like to see some language put in there to keep the boring away from the tree.
Okay, so we're gonna have staff's gonna start taking notes for us here.
That was the issue, Mr. Rubens, that you and I had the conversation about a few minutes ago, about putting something in the conditional use permit to require that whatever boring is done, stay away from the tree.
Oh, okay.
That would be one request.
Through the chair, if I may, that would also be the intent of a survey, would be that if the tree is not where it's shown on this plan, that maybe they move their building, right?
We can double up on the condition, so...
You know, I'm sure the arborist could, you know...
And then, the second item, I would just like, and I guess it's not part of the conditional use permit, but I would just like to ask, as long as AT&amp;T is here, would you be willing to drop that one clause in the proposed settlement agreement? The one that I have the biggest problem with.
Would you reserve the right to sue us for the original application?
Or to modify it, or to modify it in some way to deal with my concerns?
Or delay it.
Right.
Councilmember Olbert, we can't drop the condition, but what we can do is, we can agree to consult briefly with the city in the event, there is a technical infeasibility that comes up to try and work with the city for a brief period of time anyway, to see if that can't be resolved.
Would that consultation open it up to a public hearing, based on what you are gonna build there? Or do you want it just to remain with the city staff?
That would be with city staff.
Okay, just so we're clear on what they're offering, they're offering a meet only with city staff, not to have a public hearing.
And presumably, the intent of something like that would be to try and find a mitigation for whatever concerns that there might be.
Yes.
How much time would you be considering to grant city staff to have those discussions in?
I think that is something that we're gonna need to have to work out the details with the city attorney, because it's harder to say in the abstract, here's a finite period of time, and we want to be reasonable about it if we're gonna do it.
So for tonight, in terms of an action, it sounds like we would have essentially an expression of intent to incorporate what you described.
A consultation.
A consultation period to be determined at some future point. Well, that side says, my next question was, I was gonna ask staff if that was enough time, but since we don't have enough time, can you answer some questions?
Through the chair, I'm sorry, Councilman Olbert. Condition 25 already has a provision that settlement agreement has to be subject to approval by the city attorney. So, if there's some general direction on that issue, I could work with AT&amp;T under the current use permit language. If you want us to draft it tonight, I probably would like to talk with the council for AT&amp;T to see if there's some language that could be agreed to.
Let me take a break, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't we continue on?
Mr. Olbert, do you feel good enough with letting Mr. Rubens go forward, working with AT&amp;T staff on that? That's what you're asking, right, Mr. Rubens?
Yeah, the use permit, condition 25 already provides that the settlement agreement must be approved by me.
So effectively...
So if I get direction from you, I can, that would give me the authority to craft some language.
Based on their expressed willingness here just now to provide some review period?
That's right, yes.
And it would be, you would negotiate that, basically?
Yes, and I would consider it a meet-and-confer-review period to work out, to try and avoid the case being reactivated, is what I hear your concern.
Understood. Mr. Mayor, I'd be willing to accept that.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, those are the two.
Mr. Grisilli?
No, I just want to make sure that we're, I'm not necessarily in agreement with Mr. Olbert on this one, but go ahead, we'll...
Okay, Mr. Collins?
I have nothing else.
Mr. Grokot?
So what I would like to add is something that would language, that would be related to item 10, AT&amp;T will consult with an arborist, but that AT&amp;T will...
Do a site survey.
Will do a site survey to determine the location of the trees, the actual location of the trees, and adjust their trenching and building pads...
Accordingly.
Accordingly, and according to recommendations by the arborist.
And AT&amp;T has already said that's okay, correct? If I can just get a nod, yep, so, okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Grokot?
That's it.
Okay, so with those changes...
Okay, so with those changes, we have, um, I would like to get a motion for a consideration of a conditional use permit and architectural review permitting a new monopine cellular antenna and associated equipment at 260 Shelford Avenue. That's the first part, right, Ms. Rubens?
Yeah, that's correct.
So does someone wanna make the motion?
And, and would that motion have to incorporate the proposed changes that we just talked about?
Yeah, it would. You'd add that on, yeah. Okay.
No, I'm just struggling with trying to figure out how to verbalize it.
You just say, "And, uh," what?
As amended, perhaps.
Amended, yeah.
Well, I, I can help, just to summarize for the record what I think is, um, being proposed. That, um, the use, the conditional use permit would be approved, um, with an amendment to condition 10 to require a site survey, um, and, um, provisions to, um, protect the trees from, uh, any boring or construction on the site. I, I'd like to have it at least cover that. Um, I think that's what you wanted, Councilmember Grocott.
Well, I, excuse me. I think the language needs to include that there, there will be a site survey, and adjustment will be made to the drawings dated, whatever the date is on these, uh, 217, relative to the location of the building pads and the borings.
Okay. So we'll, that would be part of the motion if, once it's made. Um, and then, there's no other, um, changes to the use permit, except I've got some direction from staff to work with, um, uh, AT&amp;T in amending the settlement agreement that you'll be taking up next, um, uh, to incorporate a meet, some, uh, meet and confer to try and work out, uh, any issues before, um, the lawsuit would be reinitiated.
I would be happy to make a motion as along the terms outlined by the city attorney.
You're gonna have to read the resolution.
Oh.
No, it's right, it's here.
Thank you. I move that, um, we approve resolution number 2012-
10.
-dash 10, resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving a conditional use permit and architectural review permitting six new antennas on a new 40-foot-tall monopine structure and associated equipment at 260 Shelford Avenue, uh, APN 049195080 pursuant to San Carlos Municipal Code Sections 18 dash, 18 dot 118 dot 070 subsection A, 18 dot 124 dot 070 subsection A, and 18 dot 132 dot 070, as amended by the comments of the city attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk?
Before we vote, Ms. Nichols, your AT&amp;T's in agreement with what we're gonna vote on?
We're gonna need you to come up to the mic and say it, just for-
Sorry. Just wanna make sure we're all on the same page here.
Yes, Councilmember Grisilli, thank you.
And just for clarification, I think my mic was off when I seconded the motion.
That's why you're not supposed to turn them off.
It was an accent.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember, um, Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. And now we're gonna get to the next part, where it's the resolution for the, um, uh, I'm blanking.
Settlement.
Settlement agreement. And, and before we get to that, I wanna say to the remaining neighbors here, I don't think anyone on this council took, took this lightly at all. I'm actually very proud of how the council reacted. We heard your issues. I know this isn't the best solution for anybody, um, but I think it's the solution we have at hand. And then I know two of my fellow council members will make up your mind when you vote. Um, but with that being said, I think every, we, we did listen and we tried our best. And I, I know this doesn't work out for everybody, but we did the best we could.
Mr. Mayor, make, uh, a motion to approve resolution number 2012 dash-
11.
11, resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing the city manager to execute the settlement agreement to resolve pending litigation, uh, new singular wireless PCS LLC DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus the City of San Carlos, case number 411 dash CV dash 05674.
Is there a second?
Second.
And, and for the record, before the vote, just, um, again, because these are so intertwined, the-
Oh, as amended.
The settlement agreement will be amended to include, um, the meet and confer provision we talked about previously.
And on the record, Ms. Nichols, your AT&amp;T concurs?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
And those seconded by Mr. Olbert, so, uh, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, now we have to move on to other business. Thank you all for coming and, and spending the, most of your evening with us.
Mr. Mayor, since it's, uh, almost 20 after 10, do we need a motion to extend, or?
Uh, yes, and I, I know Mr. Grisilli's probably gonna vote against it, but if you, if you could extend it to 11, that would be nice.
Uh, I make a motion that we extend the meeting time until 11:00 PM tonight.
Is there-
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, moving on to item 9B. Uh, consideration of introducing ordinance number 1443, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18 to implement the intent of the recently approved comprehensive update of the zoning code.
Can I have some more water, please?
Ms. Bertolo Davis.
Like I did last time.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Stephanie Bertolo Davis, senior planner. Tonight, the council is being asked to consider some minor text amendments to Title 18, which is the zoning, excuse me, zoning title of the municipal code. Um, specifically, uh, November of last year, the council at that time did approve a comprehensive update of the city's zoning ordinance that followed an extensive public process spanning almost a two-year period. Following adoption of the new zoning ordinance and implementation of such, staff has discovered that a few minor amendments, um, are necessary to help implement the original intended, intent of the comprehensive update, as was vetted through the process. So specifically, you are being asked to consider three text amendments to Title 18. The first being to exempt projects not subject to a public hearing, uh, under the community development director's review that are subject to design review from a public noticing requirement. This would be consistent with the previous zoning ordinance. Uh, secondly, you are being asked to exempt fences from the 25-foot riparian corridor setback regulation. This also would be consistent with the previous zoning ordinance. And lastly, to remove, uh, what is the new hillside density reduction table of the new hillside overlay district. First amendment, um, is to, again, exempt public notice requirements for non-public hearing development projects subject to the director's review. The new zoning ordinance does now require design review and a minimum 15-day public noticing requirements for all development projects that are not associated with other discretionary reviews, such as planning commission or the residential design review committee purview. These types of projects would include such things as, uh, first-floor deck, small-scale, other res, small-scale residential or commercial additions. Um, this change was not directed during the comprehensive update process. It also now increases the timeframe costs, um, and support for an application. Um, similarly, also is contradictory to many of the initial updates, uh, objectives of the update itself, um, such as a reduced reliance on discretionary review. Uh, no change is being proposed to the public noticing requirements for the residential design review committee or planning commission. These continued over from the, um, previous ordinance. Second change, um, being requested for consideration is to continue to exempt fences from the 25-foot riparian corridor setback. The new zoning ordinance now does include more detailed and enhanced language, uh, within our stream development and maintenance guidelines. This allows for clearer interpretation and implementation, but it did not actually alter any of the specific development regulations. However, it did inadvertently add fences as now being subject to that 25-foot setback, meaning that no fences could, can now be constructed within a 25-foot, um, top-of-bank setback. This change also was not directed during the update process. It poses some potential concerns with life and safety issues, um, potential increased pollutant runoff into the creeks by not having any kind of physical barrier between one's, um, rear yard area, mostly because creeks do butt the rear of properties, um, within the city, and also the risk of trespassing or other crimes within private properties. Lastly, um, the new zoning ordinance now does include a hillside overlay district. This district, um, regulation does contain more detailed environmental and aesthetic guidelines for hillside development, as was directed during the comprehensive update, also to implement numerous general plan, um, policies. However, this density reduction table does effectively repeat regulations of the city's existing subdivision title, um, by cat, which caps a maximum amount of lots a subdivision can create, and that's based on the slope of a site. The, um, new hillside density reduction table actually would allow more lots to be created based on a site slope than the existing subdivision title currently allows. Uh, this is contradictory to the many direction received during the update to the general plan policies, as I noted, um, regarding the protection of hillsides, and is confusing as it is a repetitive regulation. The planning commission did consider these amendments. On January 17th, um, meeting, it did conduct a public hearing. No public comment was received at that time. Um, and with that, the planning commission did adopt a resolution recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to make these three, um, text amendments to Title 18, again, the zoning title. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we get to questions, if anyone's here, um, in consult, consultation with, uh, Mr. Malp, we're gonna be removing item 10B tonight. So I don't think anyone's actually just here for item 10B, but in case you are, feel free to go home. Um, okay, now we'll go to questions. Ms. Davis?
Um, I, I apologize. Perhaps I'm just being, I'm confused. Um, so we're, we're suppose, we're proposing an amendment to exempt fences from the 25-foot creek setback?
Correct.
So that means if I own a house, it buttches the creek, I could put a fence a foot from the water?
You could propose to put a fence at the top of creek bank?
Top of creek, right.
Top of creek bank.
Right.
Anything beyond the top of creek bank is subject to, um-
Right, but I could, even though I, I might have, it might be open space, and I'm just throwing out a wild example. I might, let's say there's nothing back there, or, or my fence now is 30 feet, whatever, away from the top of bank. I can move that fence now?
Correct.
All the way to the top of the bank?
To the defined top of creek bank, yes.
So I could, I could expand my property, if I hadn't already?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Olbert, do you have any questions?
Uh, no. Mr. Collins?
Uh, just, just one question, and I, I read this yesterday, but, uh, I don't know if I saw it in here. Does a retaining wall also constitute a fence?
A retaining wall would be subject to different requirements. Um, they are covered under the fence ordinance, but if we get into the fence ordinance, retaining walls are meant to retain and both, um, for the slope stability of the creek bank. And, um, if I could actually get to that section, I do believe it specifies a separate means of purview.
It's, it's different.
Okay.
But that's okay, Ms. Davis. We got it.
It's fine, thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
The only question, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly on the, um, subdivision issue and the lot density, um, that the change we're making would make the lots, require the lots to be larger than what is currently there, or not?
That's correct. It would make it consistent with the subdivision title.
And, and that's a larger lot?
A larger lot, based on slope.
Based on slope density. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Is there any public comment? Didn't imagine so. Uh, is there any discussion, or are all two-
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, we need to close the public hearing on this.
Oh, sorry. First, we have to open the public hearing. Now that it's been opened, now make your motion to close it.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so now there's either discussion or a motion. Does anyone have anything to discuss? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to introduce ordinance number-
1443.
1443, ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting minor text amendments to Title 18 zoning of the San Carlos Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 10A, discussion of shared fire service opportunities between San Carlos, Redwood City, and San Mateo County.
Just give me the financial report?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's not game.
All right.
Stay, you can stay.
You can stay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, council will recall that this item is part of the council's strategic plan, both in terms of looking at shared fire opportunities and also the council's, uh, interest in continuing to explore shared services opportunities. Some quick background, uh, some of you, uh, may recall this, others, this may be new. In 2004, the City Managers Association conducted a countywide fire study that revealed that at five locations around the county, there were two what was called overlapping stations that are less than a mile apart. Two of these in the city of San Mateo, one in San Carlos, one in Menlo Park, and one in Daly City. The location in San Carlos is, uh, Station 16 on Alameda and Station 18 on Edmonds Road in the county. In 2010, six years later, as part of the Tri-Data study, uh, that the city pursued as part of our budget challenges project, uh, Tri-Data also made the same observation, that there were opportunities at Station 16 and 18. And they also pointed out that there are four stations on the San Carlos border, three from Redwood City and one from Woodside, that also needed to, uh, have, uh, exploration in terms of service calls and type, type of calls. In 2011, in January, when Redwood City, uh, made a proposal to San Carlos to provide fire services, either through a merger, or later, uh, when the fire chief and I negotiated the hybrid option, um, we not only talked about 16 and 18, but we talked about activity in the hills, and we discovered that Station 12 in Redwood City, one of the four bordering stations, also has one to two calls per day. So we have the, uh, situation of three stations, and you can see them on the map in the lower left-hand corner, uh, 12, 16, and 18, each of which is a very low-volume station. And so the questions that were raised back in early 2011, were are there opportunities to either share the teams at those stations, or the stations themselves, or to consolidate into one station? At that time, uh, both the chief and I felt that it was most appropriate to first focus on looking at the city's options and to start a new department, and to deal with this question at a later date, once the new department is up and running. Um, nevertheless, the, uh, prior city council in August of last year added a study of this, uh, discussion to the strategic plan, even though the new department had not yet been funded, and we, we did, uh, understand from the council their continued interest in, uh, pursuing this. Um, this is a slide that, again, for some of you who've been on council, you'll recall it. For those of you who are new, this may be new to you. Um, at the second meeting in April, when the city council decided to, uh, go with the new San Carlos Fire Department and, and management contract with Redwood City, there were 10 items that, uh, the council expressed interest in, uh, either from the Tri-Data report, comments from council members, or areas from the four different proposals that they indicated that regardless of which, uh, proposal was ultimately selected, that as we did our annual reviews of fire department services that you wanted us to look at. I think the good news in looking at this, uh, chart, by the way, is even though we're less than one year into the new San Carlos Fire Department, that several of these changes, uh, namely the, uh, setting of salary and benefits to the San Carlos city standard versus the higher JPA costs, uh, increased outreach from cit, and citizen education, improved reporting, and two hours of training per day have already either been completed or well underway. So five of the 10 items are, already been completed, but as you'll see, item number two, station consolidation, uh, is now before you, and that's part of the context of tonight's discussion. So some opportunities. Um, the first opportunity we talk about is what I'm calling a short-term opportunity to look at Stations 16 and 18. Um, as I note, in the current arrangement, both of these stations, uh, provide ALS paramedic service. They have three-member teams. They each get one to two calls per day per station. Um, and, and even combining these two stations, they are at a lower level of activity than the Laurel Street Station in downtown San Carlos. The cost to operate these two stations is almost four and a half million dollars per year. And again, these are all rough costs based on the budget, roughly $2.8 million per station in San Carlos, and $1.6 million per station at the county. So there's some opportunities we could look at with the county, assuming they're interested. One is the potential of combining services into one of these two stations. Um, and there are questions, obviously, would we need to make some minor enhancements to whichever station, uh, continued forward? Uh, and how would, would it be staffed? And would it be an engine company? Or could there perhaps be an engine company at one station and a light-duty two-member crew in the other, and the agency with the two-member crew could buy engine service from the other agency? Um, and as I note here, there's still work to be done, obviously, on this concept. We need to have the two fire chiefs, Chief Skinner and Chief Herrera, from the county, look more at call volume and type. And we also, in this case, because, and the reason I'm labeling it short-term, the county staff is staff is already reviewing their department. They are interested in saving $2 million by July 1st. I'm not sure whether that's going to provide enough time for the two fire chiefs to do the examination we might like, but nevertheless, we wanted to bring this opportunity to you quickly. The other option that we're terming tonight, longer term, is to look at Stations 12, 16, and 18 together, all three of them. As we note, adding in Station 12, it's the same sort of thing. There's an ALS Advanced Paramedic Engine, three-member team, again, very low volume, one to two calls. If you put all three of these stations together, the activity level is around the Laurel Street, perhaps a little bit higher. The cost of these three stations, as noted in the slide, is $7.6 million per year. So again, there's an opportunity to combine three stations, save all three of the potential partnering agencies a significant amount of money. In talking to the two fire chiefs, the two city managers, and the deputy county manager a couple of weeks ago, one of the things I think we heard loud and clear from the both chiefs, both Chief Ferrera and Chief Skinner, is that all three of these stations tend to be rather old. They aren't necessarily sized for the most modern pieces of equipment. And so there's a question in the chief's mind about, does it make sense to put more money into three older stations? Or does it make sense to, given the potential savings we're talking about here, to build a brand-new station at an area that could be located strategically to serve all three areas in current call standards in the county, and to do so using some of the savings? And again, as with the previous slide, there's questions about, how would you staff such a station? Would it be strictly a three-member crew, as we have at Laurel? Or would you combine an engine and light duty or some other combination? And again, similar to the prior slide, we would want to, assuming there's interest, drill down into call volume, type, the geography of the three areas, et cetera. And this one is a little more involved, obviously, because we'd want to talk about, does it make sense to renovate an existing station, build a new station? And what would a three-agency agreement, is what we're calling this at the moment, what would that look like? So tonight, what we'd like to have from the council ideally is for you to share some thoughts with us about the opportunity of doing some shared fire services. You know, are you interested in exploring some of these options or all these options further? And if so, we would be interested in getting direction to continue the exploration with the neighboring agencies, with the understanding that, obviously, the two fire chiefs have done some initial research. They believe there are some opportunities here. But we don't want to go much further, frankly, until we have some council direction and authority. The other thing that I wanted to highlight, of course, is that because we are talking about partnering with one or two other agencies, we obviously, at this point, in my opinion, need to pause and see if there's also interest in the other two governing bodies, namely the County Board of Supervisors and the Redwood City City Council. Based on that information will obviously also guide us in terms of whether there's an opportunity to partner with in two stations or maybe all three. And then, as I note, as with the earlier slides, we would want to have the two chiefs continue their research work into service calls, staffing appropriate apparatus and facilities. We think there are two potential reporting points or milestone. The first is if the county stays on their schedule of trying to find the $2 million in savings by July 1st, we'd obviously want to continue to move this forward and potentially report to you by July 1st. If that date stays in place. If not, we could certainly provide an additional report to the council during the next six-month strategic plan, which goes through September. And again, I'd highlight the fact that the first-time constraint is not a city or city staff or city fire chief constraint. This is something from the county. We understand, just for your information, they have also met with the city of San Mateo and the city of Belmont, because, as I mentioned earlier in the slide, there is a three-station overlap in the Belmont-San Mateo Hills. And they're also looking at their other four stations in their service area to see what opportunities are there. And finally, I should mention that both Chief Skinner and Deputy Chief Moplin are in the audience. And I think if you want to get into some more detail about call volume or type, or perhaps ask Chief Skinner about some of his initial research work with Chief Ferrera from the county, I'd invite you to do that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, we'll start with questions. Does anyone want to start? Ms. Grisilli?
Yeah, thank you. Just two to start, Mr. Moore. One is, and I don't remember under what context I learned this, but I thought I had read something some years ago, that there's California law or statute that governs how far away or the sighting of fire stations in order to make sure that the coverage area, like no area they might be going to a fire, is more than a certain distance away. From the look on your face, perhaps I was hallucinating about that.
I was just going to say, I think it's more almost agency-by-agency policy, but there is a service-level standard in this county. And again, I think the chief probably could handle that one better than I.
Good evening, Chief Skinner. Actually, it's from the Insurance Services Office, recommended mile-and-a-half distance between stations. Luckily, Redwood City, our stations are about a mile and a half from each other. But when the initial stations are built, built within the city limits, and that's why we're, you know, that's how you have to look at it, in that context of why the stations are where they are in each city. And looking at this opportunity to put potentially the three stations into one, gives us the opportunity to put it on a border. Most fire stations are not put on a city's border. But in San Mateo County, we work as essentially one department with no borders. And this is a great opportunity to look at the feasibility of putting it in the border of three jurisdictions, San Carlos, Redwood City, and the county.
And Chief Skinner, so presumably, it would still meet whatever that recommended standard was?
Well, that's the data that Chief Ferrera and myself would have to look at.
Oh, would have to be gathered?
It'd have to be gathered to see, you know. We believe it would, but it's more than just the distance between the stations. It's topography. You're going uphill from the station.
Oh, I see, because it's a transit time.
It's the, yeah, the response times. And also, the thing that the call volume doesn't tell you the whole story of how the system works in the county, is that each one of those stations, those engine companies, are utilized to cover other stations in times of need. So, you know, Chief Ferrera and myself looked at some of the data, but we need to dig deeper and do a model to pull out Station 18 from the mix, or pull out Station 12 from the mix or 16, and see how that ripples into the system, to see where the gaps are. So there's a lot of study that needs to be done before we can make any definitive recommendations. But I have to tell you that there absolutely is an opportunity here that we should, we look deeply at.
My, thank you. My second question, actually, was, do we have a sense of what this next level of inquiry would cost in terms of resources, time and money?
Well, we could do it one of two ways. Use existing staff to do it, which we don't have a lot of free time, and Deputy Chief Moplin would absolutely echo that.
Well, if he had more free time, he would have joined Rotary, right? Mrs. Chief Moplin?
Geez, there you go.
Shameless plug.
That was good, though. Or we could look into having a third party do it for us. And actually, we've already looked into hiring a consultant to do the analysis for us on an ongoing basis, and this might be something that we could utilize for that. I don't know how much this would cost.
Okay, I wasn't expecting, actually, a firm number. It doesn't sound like it would be a significant outlay for at least this next step of information. There's obviously a lot of work to do before you actually can...
Mr. Olbert?
A lot of the data is there. It's just to pull it out and put the right players together to model it, and to see what we could come up with.
That's fine. Thank you.
Chief Skinner, just to jump in. Mr. Moore, do you remember how much Tri-Data cost us?
I think we spent something on the order of $60,000 roughly for Tri-Data.
And that was to build a new department? So this would be far underneath that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, you know, if I had a guess, I would say anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000, you know.
Ms. Grisilli?
I don't really have any questions. But Mr. Moore, living in the area between the county fire station down at the bottom of Edmonds and the Laurel, or the Alameda Station, unless it's the crow flies, it's a lot more than a mile between those two stations.
Well, I think the original study about the overlap between 16 and 18 was actually a study by the fire chiefs in 2000. And it was later updated by the...
Well, I don't care who updated it, but I mean, I'm just telling you, it's more than a mile. It's at least two miles, minimum, because I couldn't walk, well, of course, couldn't walk it anyway, it's up the hill. But anyway, I think chief knows what I'm talking about. And I'm not against this. I think it's a great idea, and I think we should spend the money and look at it, because I think it can, as long as we get the service. The other day, we had a fire up on Leslie, and I saw five vehicles go flying up that thing. And one of them was CalFire, and Redwood City was one. And, you know, I didn't look at all the names, but I mean, it was, they were there. And they were all flying up there within three, four minutes. Boom, they were all boom, 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 right up the hill. So they can get up the hill, even from, whether it's Edmonds or whether it's Alameda. You know, I think those would, and I assume that Edmonds can get, again, here I am, doing your job already, but Edmonds can get to Redwood City. So I mean, to me, the...
Absolutely.
The key one, I think, is the one down at the bottom of the hill that might be the one that we, anyway. I concur that we should study this.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Just a quick question. I don't know if you can answer this, given your druthers. If it comes down to 16 or 18, do you have a feeling as to which station would probably go?
Well, you look at the data that, the study that was done in '04, looked at hotspots, if you will. And the hotspots are more towards the core of the city. So the station on the Alameda 16 is definitely closer to the hotspots. It's denser in population than up on 18. So if you had to choose the two, better served, in my, you know, opinion, would be to leave 16 in place, or actually to combine the three, in Redwood City Station 12, 16, and 18, at a location near the border, or somewhere near the hospital.
Okay, so that would be building a new station?
Building a new station.
All right. And so then that goes to my next question, and maybe Mr. Moore or Mr. Moplin can answer this. What would we do with Station 16? Do we own that property? Would we sell it? What would we do?
I think that's a later discussion, right, Mr. Moplin?
Is that a later discussion?
I think it would be premature to try to make that decision tonight. Certainly, the council would have a lot of different opportunities that we could present. We do own the land, so we could re-task it for another public purpose. We could sell it. A lot of options.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
Here, I'll try to sound like Bob does most nights. Well, the only question we're asking here is whether or not to move forward with the study, so I have no questions.
Chief Skinner, the only question I have, and I'm giving favor of moving forward with the study, but when it comes to what's going on in the coast, and we're consolidating a lot of these departments, and I imagine we're going to go to municipal departments for most of them, is there a fear at some point that CalFire won't have a presence in our county, based on, we don't have planes in this county. CalFire is the only one who does.
Right. I still think absolutely there's state responsibility area in the county that the state will be responsible for, so they will have to maintain a presence.
Okay. Because I mean, that's my only worry, is with San Bruno and things like that, we need them to be in this county somewhere.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. So we're going to do, oh, you have another question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Actually, it wasn't another question. I was confused. I thought we were doing questions and then discussions.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to mention that I think it's great to go ahead and study this. I applaud people for staff for being on the outlook for these kind of opportunities. I do hope that part of what gets examined and considered is, any kind of consolidation activity may end up involving several different compensation scales and packages and structures and organizational structures. Sometimes those things get short shrift until the last phases of the process. And actually, there's a lot of value in considering, once somebody identifies a preliminary opportunity and their support from the political agencies to go ahead with it, I just hope that we'll study and talk about and consider those things.
It's on our radar, for sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you, chief. We have public comment from Brian Randall. And then if anyone else wants to speak afterwards, feel free to come up. Oh, you're fine, Brian? Is there any other public comment? Okay, I know there's going to be a motion real quickly here. But before we get to that, I just want to say, Mr. Moore pointed out, Chief Skinner and Deputy Chief Moplin, the fact that we've already, or are in process, already done five out of the 10 things in this short time span, you guys have only been our chiefs since October, I think is a testament to yourselves and the management of the Redwood City Fire Department and San Carlos, for that matter. So I just want to say thank you. Council's thoroughly impressed by what you guys have done. And I know the community has responded very well to the management and the new fire department we have. So I just want to extend our thanks for doing the job that you're doing. So is there any discussion on this item? Or can we just...
I think we don't need a motion, Mr. Grisilli, do we? Just direct to app to study it?
You're getting the go-forward. Go ahead and go forward.
It sounds like the consensus is to continue on, so I think that's all we need.
Okay, great. Item 11A, adopt of, adoption of two resolutions of the city of San Carlos acting as a successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, adopting an amended enforceable obligation payment schedule in accordance with Health and Safety Code Section 34177A and recognized obligation payment schedules in accordance with provisions of Health and Safety Code Section 34177I. Mr. Swicki?
I like that.
You said it all. Do you even have a report after that?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Mark Swicki, economic development and housing manager. On January 9th, 2012, the City Council adopted a resolution affirming that the city would serve as the successor agency to the former San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, which was dissolved by state legislation on February 1st. On January 23rd, the former RDA board adopted a resolution adopting an amended enforceable obligation payment schedule, otherwise known as an EOPS, for the period January to June 2012. Under the dissolution legislation, the city as successor may only make payments on obligations that are listed on an EOPS, which may be amended at any time. It is recommended that the city as successor agency also adopt an EOPS, provided as attachment to in your staff report, which has been further amended to reflect staff's best estimates of outstanding obligations of the former RDA. Commencing May 1st, the successor agency may only make payments on obligations listed on a recognized obligation payment schedule, otherwise known as the ROPS. The ROPS is also the basis for the successor agency to make a claim on future tax increment allocations from the county controller. The successor agency must prepare a draft ROPS by March 1st and submit it to the controller for audit review and certification. It then must be submitted and approved by an oversight board and submitted to the State Department of Finance and the state controller by April 15th. Staff has prepared two ROPS schedules for the January to June period and the July to December 2012 period, as found as attachments four and five to your staff reports. Each of these schedules includes millions of dollars in obligations, including pass-through payments, bond payments, administrative costs, as well as project costs that may or may not be approved by the oversight board. We are not conceding that any of these projects need to be discontinued, but are leaving it to the oversight board to consider the merits of each for the benefit of the community and the long-term fiscal benefit for all of the taxing agencies. The oversight board is in the process of being formed. It will consist of seven members, including representation from the city, the county, and school districts. On January 9th, the council affirmed the mayor's appointments of the mayor and the city manager to two of the seven positions. The San Mateo County College District has appointed Barbara Christensen, and the County Board of Supervisors will be considering a recommendation tomorrow night to appoint Michael Barber and Paul Scannell as county members to the San Carlos Oversight Board. I've not heard if appointments have been made by the remaining two entities, which would be the county superintendent of education and the Mid Peninsula Open Space District. Staff anticipates the first meeting of the oversight board in the month of March. Staff recommends adoption of the two resolutions, and I'm available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swicki. One of these nights, we'll just have an acronym for each night, but I don't know when that's going to happen. So is there any questions?
Mr. Swicki, I think I've asked this question of you before, but I'm going to ask it again just because I want to have it for the record. When we approve these schedules, and presumably, there's still work that is going on associated with some of these items, so there's money being dispersed, funds being dispersed on it. My question is, I'm always concerned about whether or not there's any kind of clawback provision, if the oversight board someplace down the road turns around and says, no, we don't think that was a valid item to be put on the schedule. And then, can they come after the city for the funding? My understanding is from previous discussions that they cannot, that the legislation was drafted that way, and that's still our understanding.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli?
No questions.
Mr. Collins?
No question.
Mr. Grocott? Is there any public comment on this item? Thank you, Mr. Suwicky. Seeing none, we have two resolutions, so we'll start with the first one. That's you, Mr. Grisilli.
No, Mr. Olbert.
All right, all right, I'll do it, I'll do it. You're right, I did take a breath. So I move that we approve Resolution 2012-13, a resolution of the City of San Carlos, acting as the successor agency to the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, adopting an amended enforceable obligation payment schedule in accordance with provisions of Health and Safety Code Section 34177 Subsection A.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Next.
I move that the council adopt Resolution 2012-14.
14.
Ah, I figured that out. A resolution of the City of San Carlos, acting as the successor agency to the San Carlos